Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, April 16, 2018 City Council Meeting to Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon, here. Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Mahavich.
Here.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Stuart Flag. I'm here in the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going on the public hearing portion, I'm gonna go ahead and give our attorney, David McCarthy, the floor, to kind of mention a few things prior to opening up for the public hearing.
So my material is here, as some of you know, for the continued or annexation agreement hearing that will take public comment for a little bit. But beforehand, I need to make a comment to Tom and Tom Zank, the attorney, and Randy. Is Randy here, Tom?
He is.
He isn't?
He is.
Okay, can you guys come out?
Sure.
This is Tom Zank, the one in the suit, and then the other guy is Randy Willie, who's running Meyer at this time. So I want to, I need to make a statement before the public comment. A disturbing event took place on Friday, and I want to clarify a few points before we commence the public hearing. Let me give you some background on this first. Since at least mid-March of this year, Doug Martin from the city has been trying to search for fees paid at the various mining operations around the country, the county. On March 28th, Randy Willie and Tom Zank from Meyer met with Derek, the city administrator, and myself to discuss, discuss all of the agreement issues. Doug Martin from the city was ill and did not attend. When we discussed, when the discussion turned to mining fees to be paid to the city, I said to Meyer and Tom Zank that in addition to Doug's efforts in trying to gather those fees around the county, it would be easier if Meyer could just give us the fees that are being paid to the various municipalities at the, you know, where they operate. And Meyer agreed. That was on March 28th. The next day, on March 29th, which is a Friday, Doug was still out of commission, and I had not received anything from Meyer at that point. And we were scheduled to meet with the city council that following Monday. This is Friday, and we were supposed to meet on Monday and talk about this subject. So I sent the following email to Meyer's attorney. I said, I think I sent it to Randy, actually. "Doug Martin is still sick, and we do not have all of his work on the fees around the county. Can you get me a chart today on what the fees you can confirm, including both sides of the road on Lakewood?" In response, three hours later, I received an email as follows. I won't read this, because it's too long, but he gave me, this is from Tom Zank, the attorney. "He gave me fees for Meyer Algonquin, .34 cents; Meyer County South of Ringo, zero cents; Meyer South of Elgin, zero cents; Thalen and Lakewood, ten cents." This is per ton. Consolidated Harvard, six cents, and every five years it goes up a penny. All pits annexed to Ringo, five cents; Meyer Harvard, six cents, goes up a cent every five years. No fees for any McHenry County pits. Then Lakewood, that was on March 29th, fast forward to last Friday, just a few days ago. Alderman Curry discovered that a little over a year ago. In November of 2016, the village of Cary approved this conditional use permit with Meyer. This agreement was not disclosed in Meyer's email to me, and I have every reason to think that the oversight was intentional. This conditional use permit included significant provisions relating to hours of operation, letters of credit as security for reclamation activities, fines, groundwater sampling, and noise monitoring. I reviewed a copy of the Cary amended conditional use permit, and it's clear to me, anyway, that Meyer deceived the city and me by not disclosing this information during our various meetings over the last few months, or more particularly on March 29th correspondence. The Cary agreement provides significant concessions from Meyer on the same issues that we're wrestling with in McHenry. However, McHenry was not afforded with or even given the opportunity to consider the same concessions, and we feel duped by Meyer at this point in time. Trust is a funny thing. It's easy to establish, but once it's lost, it's very difficult to reestablish, and that is where we are, back at the beginning. Going forward, any agreement with Meyer will not be built on trust but on verification of detail and using comparable information recently discovered. For that reason, I'm requesting tonight that Meyer agree that when the CUP on the south side of Route 120 expires on May 4th, Meyer shuts down all of its activities on Parcels B through D for at least 60 days or until an amended annexation agreement and new CUP are approved by the city. This must be documented in writing as a standstill agreement and signed by the end of this week. If Meyer fails to do so, the city will order the ceasing of your operations on May 5th and physically prevent you from conducting further mining activities. After the meeting tonight, Randy and Tom, if you would like, we will invite you into the city council meeting in closed session after the end of the public comment at the end of the meeting to avoid litigation, but it's certainly gonna happen. There's no way we can avoid a court case. You're gonna be upset on May 5th, we're gonna be upset, and it's going to happen. We need to face it. So my suggestion is you hang around after the meeting, and you meet with us in closed session to try and deal with it. So I don't expect you to respond, because I didn't give you notice I was gonna say this. So why don't we take the public comment? If you want to talk after the public comment, that'd be fine, or if you want to hold it, you're willing to meet with us in closed session, that would be better.
Well, of course, we'd love to respond, because all of the examples that were given to you were examples of similar pits that were not going to be conveyed to the municipality at the conclusion of the mining. Okay, but we'll be happy to, we'll be, you're available to respond.
Sure. Thank you.
So now we'll start the public hearing on the annexation agreements, agreement extension for the Meyer situation.
At this time, I called public hearing to order at 7:15 PM regarding amendments to Meyer Material Company LLC annexation agreements. There's a list here, so I'll go ahead and go off the list that's here first. If some of you would like to speak on behalf of the public hearing, we'll wait till the end, and then I'll ask you to raise your hand, and then you'll be acknowledged to come up to the podium and go ahead and give your public input. So first, we have Rich Sloan.
Sure.
Say your name and address for public record.
Sure. Thank you. Mayor and city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rich Sloan. I live at 6513 Burning Tree Circle, and I've resided there for approximately six years. The reason that I want to speak tonight is I moved to Illinois for a number of reasons, both family and personal. But when I was making my selection of where I wanted to live, there's particular beauty about Burning Tree. There were some unique things about it that I really was looking for. When I did my investigation, I knew that the gravel pit existed, but it was my understanding that those operations were going to be ceasing. So for my family, we've endured that noise for a period of time. At times, it's excessive; at times, it's tolerable. But the understanding, and when I looked at the amount of money that I was, could invest in a home, I certainly could have chose to buy something other places. I picked that place, and now I feel betrayed, in a way, not, not by the council, but certainly by the understanding that I had that quality of life was gonna improve after this agreement came up. So there's a couple of things that I want to mention, right? Number one is, unlike other leases, right, and I understand, I'm not an attorney, but I would just say that I find it odd that the citizens that live along that gravel pit will have to live with an agreement that goes out a decade or more into the future. Most of the people that are gonna vote on it won't even be in office, won't be having to live with that decision. So if there was a decision made, there was some kind of extension, my hope would that it would be some kind of a reasonable extension that would also benefit the city. There's really no revenue generation from it. We get nothing from it as, as citizens that live alongside of it. We live on a rural street with no curbs. The quality of our roads are, I think, substandard to the rest of the city. So if there was some unfortunate agreement struck with Meyer, I think it'd only be fair that we would benefit from that, have our roads redone, have improvements made in our subdivision, since we are the closest people in McHenry to that gravel pit. I hope you vote to not extend this. It's gonna impact myself as well as many of my neighbors. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I trust that you'll search your heart and do the right thing for the city. I like McHenry. I don't want to see McHenry become a pass-through city, which is unfortunate, what I've been seeing since I've lived here. I think Meyer detracts from that. When it was built, it was a rural community that had far less citizens. Now we have people that are, that care about the community, that want to have the peace and quiet preserved, and your decision can dramatically impact it for many of the people sitting in this room. So that's all I have. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Next one is Jerry Stuckman. Please state your name and address for public records.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Stuckman. I live at 6630 Haywood Court, McHenry, which is in the Wood Creek subdivision. I have spoken to the council before. There is not much I can add, except the longer this goes on, the more determined the citizenry of the property around the pit does not want this to go on until 2032. As my predecessor said, most of you won't be on the board, most of you won't be here, I won't be here, but we don't want it to go on that long. We also have to negotiate on when they start, when they finish, different sections. Mr. McCarthy, my apologies, but I did not hear a good 70% of what you had said previously. So if I'm repeating things or making moot statements, my apologies. I did hear it, there's no way litigation is going to be avoided. I don't know what the litigation is going, I didn't hear that. But if you want to compare McHenry to what Cary got and what Cary could really insisted on, they're walking all over us. Don't let them do it, please. They don't contribute that much to the city. We have had a good relationship with the pit for a number of years, but these are not the original owners. I'm an original owner, they haven't been here 30 years, I have, but we're dealing with a different entity than we ever imagined before. They come up with their heavy hitters. My respect for Mr. Zank, he is a heavy hitter, and I don't want him or anyone there to walk over you or us. Please stand up for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next on the list is Bill and Maria Rabenda.
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 My wife's here. Bill.
Name and address for public records.
My name's Bill Rabenda. I live at 7201 Burning Tree Drive. I've been in this community now for 12 years, and like my predecessors before me, I don't have that much to say, except that when I came here, they promised me that that gravel pit was not gonna be here, and that our houses in our valley would go up, and we would have a community, a neighborhood, just as beautiful as these other neighborhoods. Now, I was, that's what I was told, and like Rich said, that's why we bought this house, thinking this is gonna be a beautiful place to raise our family and to live here. Not for that gravel pit to be extended. I think it's just a sore eye, and I don't think it does anything good to our community. So with that said, that's all I have to say, because I agree with everybody else, with Rich said and with another lady he said. So if you consider it, just be against it if you don't mind. Thank you.
Next one on the list is Terrence Nader.
Good evening, Terrence Nader. My wife and I have a home at 1213 Metanouska in Glacier Ridge. I know that everyone sitting on the council took these positions because you believed you could do something to help the city, that you could safeguard its operation, protect the future of the people who live here, and I know that that's what you have in mind tonight as you deliberate on the annexation agreement. I couldn't help, as I read the former annexation agreements, but to note that the findings that councils have made in the past were almost contradictory when it comes to the nature of a gravel pit. For example, that the annexation will not impair the value of surrounding property, that it will be in harmony and appropriate for the orderly development of the district. A gravel pit is almost never harmonious with its surroundings. But that being said, I know that, although I certainly don't claim any expertise...
And we were told at that point in time that in another seven years, all operations would cease to exist, and that the city had long-term plans for that area in terms of additional subdivision, additional roads. They had talked about a body of water, in fact. And so without having to go over what some of my neighbors had said, I just kind of feel like we're being sold a bill of goods here. I swallowed seven years. Going on another 12, 14, 15 years, to me, that does not sound reasonable at all. So I would ask that you find it in your hearts, and more importantly, in your minds, to make the right decision. We simply don't want them as neighbors. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public that'd like to make a public comment? I see none. At this time, I'd like to invite Tom Zank up to the podium, and Randy as well, if you
Actually, against that door might be better, Tom. Randy, if you go right under the exit sign there, maybe?
Sure.
Face it straight out, and try and be fast. Tom, why don't you, why don't you tack it this way a little bit, so that it's more parallel to the door?
You can sit.
A little bit more?
I don't know if this gentleman and lady's gonna be able to see it.
Yeah, they'll squawk if they can. How's that? You guys see? So that's pretty close. Feel free to get up and look at it, probably all know what it looks like.
Good evening. Tom Zank, on behalf of Meyer Material, an attorney for Crystal Lake, Illinois, and I have Randy Willie here with me. Randy, and...
The regional manager for Land and Environment, for La Farge Aggregates/Meyer Material Company, South Elgin, Illinois.
I don't know if all of you have had an opportunity to read the transcript at the plan commission meeting. I know Alderman Curry was there, and Alderman Santee was there. In fact, in 35 years, I've never had an Alderman come to a plan commission meeting and testify against a petitioner, but I witnessed it that night. And, and the reason I wanted to make a little bit of a presentation here is because maybe some of you don't know the history, and maybe some of you don't know the general geography as it relates to this particular site. And Randy, Randy and Doug from Meyer Material will be able to fill in, fill in the blanks a little bit. But as, as you probably know, in the very northeast corner of the site, back in 1976, this parcel was annexed to the city of McHenry. It has industrial zoning, it has the right to do industrial things, and also mining. All right? And then, and that was in '76. And then, in '88, okay, this parcel C, this parcel C was annexed. And parcel B down here was annexed in '77. Parcel D over here was annexed in '90. And then in '98, this is when parcel E was annexed. So, you know, this, this activity has been going on in the city of McHenry for 41 years. During that 41-year period, Randy, how many years have, have you been involved with Meyer Material company?
Meyer Material acquired the operation from the Miller family in 1988, shortly after Parcels B and C were annexed.
Okay, and then, and at the time that Parcels B and C were zoned in 1988, you were with Meyer Material company?
That's correct.
And at that, at that time, parcel C was bordering Glacier Ridge. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, tell us what transpired with respect to this strip along the west side of Glacier Ridge?
To the best of my knowledge, when the Millers went through the annexation process, they came to an agreement with the Glacier Ridge Millers Association and the Wood Creeks Millers Association to deed a 200-foot-wide strip that runs from the south end of Wood Creek all the way up, that basically bisects the mine property from the residential, and then up to that grove of woods. There's a square of woods, it's approximately 10 acres, and that was also deeded to Glacier Ridge. And that was a buffer zone that was established back at the annexation to keep separation between the two, the residential and mine.
Okay, and then, and when, in '88, there was an annexation agreement entered into that allowed mining for 10 years with a renewal of 10 years?
That's correct.
Okay, and then in '98, there was, there was a comprehensive amendment to the annexation agreement and brought in parcel E. Is that correct?
Yes, actually, parcel D was added in 1990 or 1991. That's what squared off the far western flank at that time. And then parcel E was the Thompson farm. That was added on in the late 90s, 1998.
Okay, so now, when mining was occurring over here in parcel A, back in the 70s and the 80s, that's where the plant existed. Is that right?
That's correct.
And, and then that plant was subsequently moved in about '98 or so?
Yes, that was part of the master plan over time to move the processing plant farther, actually, to the west where most of the, majority of the reserves would be, and put a new entrance in along Route 120. So that would be half a mile west of the grade school, Valley View Grade School.
So for purposes of dimensions, from Burning Tree, the southern edge of your property, to Illinois Route 120, that's a mile?
I believe that's close to a mile. That's, that's a whole section.
Right. Okay. And so, now where is your plant right now? Are you located in this neighborhood?
Correct, right on parcel D and C and D.
Okay, so you're right here at parcel C and D?
Yes.
Okay, and in between the plant and Burning Tree, what exists?
Stockpiles of aggregate, finished stockpiles of aggregate, a conveyor belt that runs south past where that 10-acre Woods parcel is. I believe there's one parcel of aggregate maybe south of the Woods, there's a P gravel stockpile, I think.
To the west.
To the west. And then ultimately, it opens up into where it is the open cavity of the mine today.
Now, what are the status of the berms along the southerly edge of the property?
Those were built in succession per the operations plan. They should be 10 feet in height with a fence, a privacy fence along the property line.
Okay, now, what is the depth of the operation plant? In other words, what, what's the elevation here at Burning Tree? And you don't have to give me numbers. How far below the surface of Burning Tree is the operation?
Approximately 70 feet to the mine floor.
So from where the operation plant is to the top of the berm, there's an 80-foot elevation?
That's correct.
Now, would that be the same thing as it relates to Glacier?
And we're in the process of building the last leg of the berm along the Glacier Ridge. So the Wood Creek is a permanent berm that's been there for probably 20 years, and now that we're getting into the last phase of the Glacier Ridge, we're building the berms along those adjoining homes right there.
Okay, so that construction is taking place now?
Correct.
So in '88, when C and D were zoned, where did the mining commence after that annexation was?
You meant B and C.
B and C, I'm sorry.
In 1988, B and C, the mining commenced directly south of the grade school, because that's where that petition started at, would start at the southeast corner of the grade school property.
So a decision was made back in '88 that, that you would start mining here, and then you would proceed to the south?
Correct. That was in the operations plan.
That's in the operations plan. It's also in the reclamation plan.
Correct.
Is that correct? Now, when did you mine, I, when did you mine parcel E?
We acquired parcel E and annexed it in 1998, and then revised the reclamation plan to change the cell formation temporarily, temporarily meaning a decade, because you had, we went to, we kept mining west before we started mining south. And then we actually came back to mine behind Burning Tree several years ago.
So approximately, how much acres do you have in parcel?
It was 115.
And, and what is the present status of that?
That's all restored. Most of it has been, bonds were released with the exception of the berms that run along Ridge Road, and those will be brought down when the mine's completed. But that's all mined out and restored.
Now, have you had experience with Meyer Material with respect to reclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of my career.
Okay, could you share with the audience, with, with the board, some of the reclamation that Meyer has undertaken and completed?
Sure. I have a handout I could pass to the board members.
Why don't, why don't we hand it up?
Yeah. Do you like this? I won't walk through all of it, it's just, most of our mines are permitted through the state of Illinois process, which is the Surface Mine Land Reclamation and Conservation Act. So therefore, we pick out permits, we're issuing bonds, we are periodically inspected. The bonds aren't released until the inspectors say we've met final grading and vegetation requirements. But there are several ones that were done on private property that didn't even require a permit. But the one on the cover page is our Big Rock quarry, it was in Sugar Grove, Big Rock Township. Ultimately, after it was mined out in the 70s, 80s, and early 90s, it was transformed. The Kane County Forest Preserve bought it and operates it as a Big Rock Forest Preserve. It's now about 468 acres. Those were all permits that were taken out with the LOIDNR and released. The Belvedere site was a privately owned property. It was a dredging operation. We created a lake for the landowners, tucked in the shorelines for the landowner's benefit, and left the site. I don't know where, where it's doing today. The next one is called the KD site, that's just over the border in Wisconsin. That was a 250-plus acre site that Meyer actually acquired through the Miller family and completed the restoration. We ultimately sold the property to Kenosha County, and it is currently used as a recreational center with a 75-acre lake. The Algonquin pit, south of Claussen Road, is still a mine in progress. It's still under several open LOIDNR permits as we reclaim the perimeters. Ultimately, it should have about a 75 to 80-acre lake on the site. There's also lands adjacent to it that are but Route 31, south of Claussen Road, that we would look at some point to develop commercial, just because... just because of the access from a busy road. The next page is a Carpenter'sville site, and the picture that's there shows when it was in its undeveloped phase. And this was off of Route 62 at County Line Road. During the course of the mining and restoration, a home builder had approached us about stopping the restoration, like, "Don't let the black dirt down because we'd like to build homes there." Ultimately, if you go to the next page, you'll see the design from the Algonquin Lake subdivision, which is right there, like, east of Sand Blume Road and Route 62. Home building commenced as we were mining in the late 90s. And then you'll see the next page, you'll see where the Algonquin Lake subdivision's fairly built out. There's a grade school at the bottom of it with ball fields as well. And then adjoining that to the east is the Silverstone Lake subdivision, which is all built out in Carpenter'sville, it's a multi-unit site. Ultimately, I think there's 500 or 550 acres between the two properties, but it's all single-family homes there.
I'm going to interrupt you now. Was Silverstone also part of a Meyer reclamation?
Yes, these are all, yeah, Meyer reclamation projects. And then the last one is the McGraw Site. And the McGraw Site is part of the McGraw, Max McGraw Wildlife Foundation. They had a private hunting and fishing club, and pretty special. It was about 175-acre sand and gravel site that we mined over 15 years and ultimately created a six or a seven-lake private hunting and fishing refuge. And if you go back in time, this was a watercolor back in the 70s of how they made reclamation plans. So you can see the aerial photograph of how we created the lakes, and then the Wildlife Foundation followed us and put plantings in. Ultimately, we ended up mine it, and there was a gas pipeline that ran down the middle, which became the service road, we mined the lakes on both sides. And we applied for awards, we received the first State of Illinois Reclamation Award in 1987. We are also honorable mention for a couple of federal awards on this project. So we do have a lot of experience in restoring land, because it's of much value to us, whether, if we own the property, we have a vested interest in making it as saleable as possible. So we always want to make these things look great when they're done. And even when we work with people who own the property, we have ideas of, you know, concepts that become ideas, or whether home building was one of them, wildlife refuge was another. But again, we always make people who own the land, unless it's just ourselves.
I have some more questions of you, but I think it'd be interesting if Doug, if Doug could explain the operation of, the present operations of the pit as it's ongoing now.
Thank you, Tom. Again, Doug Everkamp, I'm the plant manager for the McHenry-Algonquin operations. So I became the manager after the merger with Lafarge Holson. I came from Vulcan Materials for 26 years, operation, running and managing stone quarry, sand and gravel operations in Wisconsin, and then into Illinois. Then I became the plant manager at McHenry. We did a, an evaluation of, of the site, being new to it, looked at the mining operations, and we decommissioned. There was six stone crushers on the site, there was one static screen that was in the back with two loaders that were running, that might have been some of the noise prior to 2015, and six shaker screens. So we did a plant rebuild in the winter of the early year of 2016, where we took out three crushers and three shaker screens. And now we have two crushers and three screens. And then after that, the one-inch product that, we did give a couple tours, goes right up to the wash facility, which is non-crushable, it's just rinsing with water and polyurethane for the, for the noise mitigation. We invested in a water truck that is onsite, we have water facilities. We have a great group of employees that have been there, average 30 years, that have been in the McHenry community. We employ approximately 20 employees that live in the community, either in the production, quality control, administration. And without being set on what they, you know, they contribute, or they acquire probably a little over 1.2 million in salaries per year, which is back in this community.
Doug, could you show us the routes that a truck will take if you have a customer that comes in? And perhaps you'd like to go over here so the board can appreciate how, how the plant operates?
Of course, north is up. This is our shipping entrance off of Route 120. So depending on the products, the finer products are stocked out to the north because they're smaller, right? So then as they go through the process, we have our finer sands here, the coarser stones to the south. So we mainly, we, out of the 1 million average tons in sales a year we do, like 1.1, I believe we did last year, almost 1.1, which is public knowledge, right? Because we're paying on it. Approximately half, 600,000 of that is from the concrete stone and sandwiches on the north of the park. The trucks come down, if they need to get weighed in, their scale is right here, approximately 300 feet off of the main entrance when you come into the property on the pit floor. They'll get their tear weights, if they need to get their tear weights, and then they'll go off to the east on the brown sand pile. And as I showed on a few tours, how they have to stage, they get their product loaded, and they come back behind the wash plant. They don't, we don't have any trucks going south of the processing plant. So the concrete stone and the concrete sand is all loaded up here, which, like I said, is 75% of our total products. And then when we come down into the crushing facility where we make asphalt chips, asphalt binder, and road base, they come down approximately another 600 feet to that area, and they get loaded with, with two shipping orders with white noise alarms. Off they go to the scale, and they come back out on 120.
Now, the customers that come in are not employees of Meyer Material, is that correct?
Correct.
And they have safety?
Site-specific hazard awareness training and all our safety training.
Okay, and there's been some recommendations that you could be able to route the trucks in such a way that those, number one, to your knowledge, can those beepers be turned off?
Not by federal law.
Okay, and, and is there a way you could route the trucks in such a way that they would not back up?
The only, no, it's, it's impossible. Every operation is unique to itself, stockpiles are very large. We are a volume-driven industry. With the amount of trucks, if we did have to have them come down, and we tried to load them one at a time, like you visualize a conveyor belt that would just go linear, it would be impossible because the material you'd ship away from the pile, the trucks wouldn't be able to get close enough to it. And if that was the case, we would have trucks backed up all the way up onto 120 to try to get in one at a time, with the amount of trucks that might be coming in in the morning.
Now, what, what barriers are there between this operation loading facility and Glacier Ridge and Burning Tree?
Well, we have the 10-acre woods, we have, we have the 70-foot of farm field agriculture, what was agriculture, there's still being a farm. Where we changed our mine plan is another thing that we've done. We used to try, we used to take it all the way like, if you would say, like a typewriter. We'd come all the way up to the property line and then work our way back. So we did change it, we were cutting this in quadrants, and we're going to keep the jaw crushing plant behind and underneath the 70-foot surface as we take it into the property line to the east.
So you have a 70-foot wall below the surface of Glacier Ridge or Burning Tree, and that, that, that machine is digging into, is that correct?
Correct. With the, and we are currently building the 12- to 14-foot berm right now as, as we're doing our stripping campaign for 2018.
Thank you. Now, Randy and the members of the city council, as we know, the city has an ordinance as it relates to mining and mineral extraction. And the city has performance standards, which have been in place, I think, since the latest, this latest ordinance was in 1986. And the performance standards at page 302 talk about a variety of permitted sound levels. And I know you're probably more familiar with the ordinance than I am. Then at page 304, it talks about particulate matter and what the maximum emissions will be on a facility of this nature. And it talks on page 305, at section 2, the emission rate per hour that is permissible. And the ordinance goes on, it indicates that these standards, like at page 309, the zoning administration administrator may issue a violation notice if there have been any violations during the term of the operation. At page 310, it also indicates that if there have been violations, that the expense of measuring those violations can be, can be assessed in addition to fines against the violator, which would be Meyer Material. The zoning ordinance also talks about if there's a violation of your zoning ordinance, that could be noise, that could be particulate matter, that there could be a violation on a daily basis, an assessment of a fine if proven between $25 and $500 per day for each day that that violation occurs. Your zoning ordinance requires that Meyer Material has to operate consistent with all state and federal regulations. It requires that all trucks hauling excavated materials shall be loaded or covered so as to prevent spillage onto the public streets, and any spillage on the streets shall be removed by the operator at least every 24 hours. It also provides what the hours of operation should be. So Mr. Willie, during what period of time, since 1988, would you have been the recipient of any official notices of a violation that Meyer Material has in some way violated the ordinances of the city of McHenry?
I would have probably received anything that came from state regulatory affiliations, Illinois EPA, Illinois DNR. Mine Safety and Health Administration may have gone to Allen Miller, but that's more specific to employee safety. And I would say in the last 10 years, I would have gotten any responses direct from the city of McHenry.
Okay, in the last 10 years, have you received any notices of violation from the city of McHenry?
No, I have not.
Have you received any verbal notices of violations from either adjoining property owners or the city of McHenry?
I've received a few complaints from Ryan Schwalenberg over the course of the last three years.
Okay, and how many would you say?
Three off the top of my head.
Okay, and could you share with us what those complaints were?
Yes, fall of 2015, when we had our stripping crew out, there were several neighbors in Burning Tree that were getting excessive dust because the winds were pretty sustained for about two or three weeks. When we stopped the stripping campaign last summer, we got a call on a noise complaint from a Burning Tree resident, which I contacted Doug and found out after the fact that's a day we weren't running, but I think he went back and found Sweeney Heidler in the end and tested. And then there was one more. Oh, I got a phone call regarding, from someone in Glacier Ridge through the city, regarding noise coming early in the morning, like at 5:00 a.m., which I suspected it was coming from Purry.
Are you aware of any other complaints other than those that you've shared with us?
No.
Okay, none of them have been in writing?
No.
And every complaint that you received, how did you react?
Immediately tried to get to the, either the root of the problem at the plant first, or contact the city directly, or contact, in some cases, the landowner directly.
Have, have you personally gone around the, oh, portions of the perimeter of the property to test for noise?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and what kind of instrument do you use?
I use a dosimeter handheld, it's got a wind mic on top of it.
So if Meyer Material were in violation of the noise requirements, there would be negative consequences to Meyer locally and possibly nationally, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's incumbent on Doug and other employees at Meyer to make sure you're within the limits of the McHenry zoning ordinance in the state of Illinois, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Have you ever received a complaint from the state of Illinois, the IDNR, or MSHA?
The DNR, no, I can't speak for MSHA, maybe Doug can. We did have one visit from the EPA, it was at least 10 years ago, and it had to do with the sand pile that was next to the concrete batch plant. And we were asked, because during a period of high winds, the top of the pile was blowing onto Route 120, because it was a very tall pile. So we ended up taking the pile down and having it down. But not, there was no notice of violation issue.
There was an issue that was raised regarding the operations plant. Randy, when, when the Millers were operating on parcel A in the 70s and early in the 80s, they were operating 24 hours a day, is that correct?
They were able to operate the washing plant 24 hours a day.
Okay, and the zoning ordinance now, or since this plant was moved, how many hours a day does it operate?
It's a newer plant, so when, when they moved the processing area, they actually bought a new wash plant, and then they moved that over on parcel D.
Okay, now, there was an occasion when, I mean, there's, there's an annexation agreement that requires the wash plant to have 18-foot panels around the top of the plant, the wash plant, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And at one time, there were 18, there were panels around the wash plant?
That's correct.
Okay, and as, as it became a state-of-the-art facility, those panels were removed, is that correct?
Yes, in 2009, they decided to revamp the washing system, and they installed two dewatering screens. And it uses a lot less water, makes a lot less noise. And when Allen took the panels off to revamp the plant, he didn't put the panels back up.
What would the consequences be to Meyer if it didn't follow the reclamation plan as approved by the city of McHenry?
We'd be in default of our land use permit. We'd also be in default of the state of Illinois, because all of the mine parcels that we have are regulated through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources too.
And what would be the consequences to Meyer of the value of the land that it owns?
Well, we would be losing the value of our own land, like I said earlier. It's in our best interest to restore the property to the highest value we can, because ultimately it would be sold to a developer or an interim user.
So would you explain to us what the bond situation is right now with the state of Illinois and the city of McHenry?
Yes, for the original city annexation agreement, there's been a 3, $100,000 bond issued to the city of McHenry since, I believe, 1988. In addition, for all the parcels we have that are permitted through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, we still have open areas that need to be restored, and there are bonds associated with those open areas. And the total bonds we have with the state of Illinois are $934,000 right now.
Do you have any, how often are you examined by the state of Illinois agencies?
Well, I know on the DNR, I'd say at least twice a year, maybe a few three times.
Have you had any recent evaluations regarding the status of your reclamation of this site?
Yes, last, last fall.
Do you have written evidence of that?
I should, yeah, I do.
Do you have that?
This was presented to the zoning board.
So it would be in your package, I assume you would have? And the date on this, Randy, is March?
October 30th of 2017.
And, and what were the, what were the results of that reclamation study?
Well, the inspector comes out fairly routinely to see if we're keeping up with the progress. And he talked about the placement of dirt and where we're going with it, but when you get to the second page, it says, "The deposition slopes along the west side of the quarry are in good shape. These sides are well-sloped to the pit and vegetated. Some of this acreage on the west interior slopes has been planted with crops. Other acreages implanted in grass and alfalfa mixture that's being utilized for hay production. The operator was reminded that no more than 30% slope is allowable in effort to control erosion on the sloped pasture or farm." to control erosion on the sloped pasture or farm ground. There has been no new stripping or mining activity within the site's north pit since last inspection. Pit looks the same as seen during the last inspection." It goes on to say, "No problems were noticed during the site inspection. The operator continues to do a good job of working on the reclamation as the mine progresses. Monitoring of mining and reclamation activities at this site will continue on an appropriate basis."
Now, have you received similar reports of that in the past?
Yes.
Have you always received a similar blessing from the state of Illinois?
I don't read them cover to cover like that, but we'll know if we're not following his rules. He's a pretty tough inspector. That's fine.
Now, Randy, you have a facility in Cary, Illinois, is that correct?
Algonquin and Cary, yeah.
Okay. And you have been involved in that project since two thousand and seven or eight?
I probably was involved prior to that. Originally, there was a lot of the land was annexed into the village of Algonquin, but the more recent annexation was in the village of Cary, so we're kind of working with two municipalities.
And although it wasn't a part of the public hearing, Mr. McArdle was referring to that this evening before we commenced the public hearing, is that right?
That's correct.
How does the Cary facility and situation, in your opinion, differ from the mining facilities that you have in Harvard, in Algonquin, in the City of McHenry, and in other locations?
Sure. The Cary parcel redevelopment project is what it was called, and it was petitioned as. And it was a combination of a mining process, but we were also delivering a finished end-use product as part of it. So, in essence, we're like a general contractor. We had promised to build a park, we promised to build a trail system and a parking lot and drainage, and we are being held to a different, I'll say, reclamation standard, so to speak, on that. And on top of that, the land is being deeded to them. So, at the end of this, it's not even going to be our land. So, when there's letters of credit out there, they were treating us as a developer, whereas in Harvard, or Crystal Lake, or McHenry, we're mining the property, we're restoring it to our permit requirements, which is pasture land or whatever. Ultimately, there's an end-user that's going to develop the property later that I would assume would boast a letter of credit for their activities.
Which is similar to some of the reclamation plans you showed the city council this evening, is that correct?
Correct.
That's when you reclaim it, and you may sell it to a park district, or you may sell it to a developer, an Elwood residential, or sell it, or like the McGraw side.
Correct.
Whereas in the village of Cary site, it was almost as if the moment the application was approved, Cary considered the property as its own and wanted to make sure that you didn't extract like half of the material and then disappear, and they wouldn't have any money to build their park, is that correct? It's a completely different situation.
We had promised a lake and trail system that was integrated, along with the parking for forty cars, concrete apron, and so on. So, again, we were a general contractor in that case.
And unlike the village of Algonquin, the city of Harvard, or the City of McHenry, you didn't pay a royalty fee on a per-tonnage basis, did you?
No, we did not.
You paid a significant annual fee, but you did not pay a tonnage.
Right.
I just wanted to get that out there in the audience. Is there anything else you'd like to share with the city council this evening?
No, I guess when I heard earlier what Mr. McArdle said, it's a lump-sum fee, and I believe I even mentioned that. I don't know how to calculate it on a per-ton basis, because I don't know how many tons came out of that project.
Did you and I get together so we could deceive the City of McHenry?
No.
With respect to what Cary was doing?
No, no.
Is it a completely different type of mining, as you've indicated?
Yes. It was an encompassed development project. It should even be listed, if you can see the mine reports, the mine report that was put together is called Cary Site Redevelopment Project.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, the point is, this company or its predecessor has been here for over forty-one years. Okay, there's never been a formal written complaint against Meyer Material Company, against the Millers, or against the current owners, which is Meyer Material Company, LLC. It has been a good corporate since, and it has conveyed a significant amount of money to the city. It's been a good marriage between the parties. Perhaps the biggest mistake that was made by Meyer Material was in nineteen eighty-eight, when they commenced to remove the aggregate from the north going to the south, instead of immediately going to the south, immediately adjoining all their neighbors, and for the next ten-year period, going to the north. And that's where we find ourselves today. This company would like to continue to be a part, a significant part of this city. You heard the mine manager talk about the number of employees. You know what the contribution has been to the City of McHenry. By the way, Randy, what did the economy do to your ability to further the aggregate, the mining here, to remove aggregate from two thousand seven to two thousand fifteen?
Well, overall, we had, Meyer Material Company had four or five active mines in McHenry County in southeast Wisconsin, and we supplied ourselves our ready-mixed concrete operations with aggregates. So, we were quite vertically integrated when the recession hit, and obviously, the housing market crashed and went to zero for at least seven or eight years. So, we lost about seventy percent of our production. And ultimately, the ready-mix division was sold off as we were acquired. They ran the business for a while and decided to strictly get back to the aggregates portion of it, and that was probably part of the merger with Lafarge. So, now we're strictly a mining company, but it was a seventy percent reduction in production and sales. It's pretty significant.
So, can I follow up on that, Tom? I don't want to step on toes here.
Please do.
So, that's exactly what these people are getting at, is why aren't we done today or by May fourth? Is your explanation that because of the economy, otherwise you would be done?
We'd be certainly farther along. I, you know, I don't know how many years we've lost overall, but it's a significant change.
Well, no, but you extrapolated from the good years.
Yes.
If you extrapolate, do you have an opinion as to whether you'd be finished today? Forget the economy.
On the south side?
Yeah, the south side, we would be done, because we'd still be in the concrete business, and we'd be supplying a dozen ready-mixed concrete plants as well.
And there's nothing that stopped you from mining during those years, other than your business decisions, right?
You could put it in stockpiles, and nobody was going to buy it.
Right. That's my point. You could have mined it, you could have reclaimed it, you could have stockpiled it, we'd be done.
You would have ran out of room to stockpile it.
You would have ran out of room, but you could have stockpiled it. You could have mined it, reclaimed it, we'd be done, correct? If you chose to continue working instead of made the business decision to stop, for whatever reason, you had the right to mine, and you certainly had the ability.
We may have finished the south side.
Yeah, we wouldn't be here. These people would be, they'd have reclaimed land. So, I invited you into the closed session. I know you're going to leave as soon as this is over with, or you're going to stay. Can you tell me which?
Well, we're going to stay. I don't know how long you can be there. I don't know what other items you have on your agenda, but, you know, I can give you my cell number, it just will be available.
Well, right, but we were running out of meetings before May fourth. That's the only reason I suggested it might be useful.
Where have you stayed?
Okay, it shouldn't, I'm not going to say it. That's not a bright day to do. So, you know, yep?
That's all I have. As you know, the zoning ordinance specifically says that unconditional uses related to regarding mining shall be renewable, and this city council in eighty-eight and ninety-eight has made a decision that these parcels have all met your city code, and we look forward to working with you for an extension. Thank you very much.
Question?
Sure, go ahead and hand up the podium.
Thank you. I just.
Get your name again.
Just one take, just a second.
Name, man.
Rick Sloan, sixty-five thirteen Burning Tree Circle. Just a couple things, I could ramble on, but I'm not going to. I just want to stay focused on a couple things. It sounds like they really enjoy wrapping up the business, reclaiming land and giving it back. Then why don't they do that? Right? That's what I'm saying. The other thing, Randy, where do you live? Just curious. No, give your address, but where do you live?
I used to live in McHenry.
Where do you live now? Where do you live now?
I live in McHenry.
Okay, okay. There's a couple things, you know, that were said. One, the privacy fences, I don't know what that means. A chain link fence, I wouldn't consider a privacy fence. But the other thing, the most important thing I would tell you is, as a good citizen, I don't like to burden my government with complaints. Every government has a process, right? You have a complaint, I call the police and say, "I don't like my neighbor, my neighbor is doing whatever." But as a good citizen, I try to behave and work that out amongst my neighbors. I think everybody in this room, had we known that you were going to get up and say that nobody was complaining because we didn't file complaints with the city, we would have known. We all thought, we all thought we would be, we all thought we'd be a good neighbor, keep quiet, work with the city, the city had this coming. We were going to end this relationship. It's kind of like fighting with a neighbor that has a for-sales sign in his front yard. What's the point? But if that's what it's going to take for this community to let this company know, we don't want them there, we will call every day, every time there's a complaint, every time there's dust, every time there's a complaint, and we will call the city EPA, and we'll, if we have to, we'll hire a private company to test the air, test the sound, because I don't believe that he walks the perimeter. I certainly have never seen it. So, let's have an independent, if the city doesn't want to do it, we should have an independent person validate the sound and the soil samples that are showing up in people's pools. Because the fact that the state EPA or the federal EPA doesn't care about this mine doesn't surprise me. But if what it's going to take is us complaining and engaging the state and the federal government, brother, we will do it. I am not afraid to pick up the phone every single time that noise bothers me, but I don't want to do that to this city. I'm asking you, don't make us do that to make our point. End this relationship. Make them reclaim the land and put our picture on that brochure, so when they go to the next city, we have the next lake and the next DNR land that we can enjoy. You've had your time, you've mined your material, you've made your money, and you know exactly how many pounds you took out of there, because the gentleman standing here said how many tons you took out. So, when you try to say you don't know what you paid because you don't know how much you took out, you contradicted your partner, who told us exactly how much material was taken out.
That was a different facility.
Listen, listen.
That was a different facility.
Okay.
All right.
So, I'm going to just close with saying this. I have a call to action, I know I have everybody's support. We will call the city, we will complain. We'll call the state EPA, we'll call the federal EPA. We are going to make it our mission to get this business out of our backyard.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. To the gentlemen's comments, we have no problem with being tested for dust, we have no problem with being tested for noise, because we will pass those tests. Thank you.
Really? You will pass it? Come on! You will, there's no way.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Alderman Condon?
Someone.
Second? Alderman Mahavich?
Now, just to explain this, so, we're conducting a, this is actually the second public hearing, there's only one required for the hearings on annexation agreements. We conducted one earlier, we're conducting a second one now. We're going to end it from a legal standpoint, that means we've complied with the statute. But whenever we continue this to another day, there's always a public comment session, section, and nobody's going to deny your right to talk. It's just legally, we're closing it, okay? Or if they go it that way.
Discussion, Alderman.
Yeah, I saw someone's hand up yet. Just wondered if she wanted to say something, so as long as we're still open.
Sure. Come on up to the podium. Sorry about that.
It's all right, I'm short. My name is Kathy Adams. I have lived in this town at thirty-six eighteen Grand Avenue since nineteen eighty, and there have been more and more gravel pits that have opened during the time that I have been here. I have not called the city to complain about the three broken windshields that I have had from trucks that have been in front of me that have not been covered, as I was told when I had to pull over, and I called the police officer, she said, "Nope, the trucks are supposed to have been covered." Well, that's fine, but they weren't, and that had to go on my insurance. So, the trucks are not always in compliance, and there's no way for us to let you or the gravel pits or anybody else know that the trucks are not in compliance. So, I'd just like that to go into the record, because they need to be out of here.
Any other discussion by council? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, just a couple of general comments. First of all, basically, I'd like to thank the public for being here. You know, several of you have been here a number of times, it's quite a group tonight, more than I certainly thought we'd see, but some of the things that have come up, quite frankly, you know, I know our attorney mentioned my name in his comments, that I had found information out from Cary, which is true. However, what prompted that actually was some information sent to me by one of the residents, which got me looking, it wasn't really that issue, but it was something else which got me looking into it. So, I guess what I would say to, and by the way, for the vast majority of you, I am your alderman, but I would say that it just, you know, stay involved in your city and in your government, because when people aren't involved, as the saying goes, when bad things happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. And any other discussion by council?
It's a motion to close the public hearing.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Thank you, council. I want to thank all of you personally, on behalf of council and staff, for coming out of, you know, this evening, out of your busy schedules to come and speak your minds, so I appreciate that. And if you are wanting to leave, you're more than welcome to, you know, leave at this time, so, or you could stay, for sure. So, at this time, I'll open up for a public comment.
Thanks, Marty.
You don't have a brother, and you don't have a wife, who's a judge, okay.
Oh, no, that's Sue, that's a, not related.
Okay, thank you.
I can confuse her. Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to get going on the rest of this meeting here. Is there anyone, a member of the public wishing to address the council on any consent, agenda item or items that are not on the agenda this evening? And once again, if it's items seven A through seven F, those will be, as they're considered, you'll be able to make a public comment on each individual item. So, this is just items on the consent agenda, or items that are not on the agenda this I see none? Moving on, I'm looking for, actually, I'm going to go ahead and do a consent agenda. Is there any council members that would like to pull an item for separate consideration? Alderman Curry?
Six A.
Thank you. Any other items that would like to be pulled by council? See none? At this time, looking for a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, six B through six F. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make the motion to approve those items B through F.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Condon? Any discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon? Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. The item that was pulled by Alderman Curry was 6A. I'm looking for a motion to renew sublet agreement between City of McHenry and Trey and Tom Corporation DBA Main Street Station for the property located at 4,005 West Main Street for a term ending October 31st, 2020 for $9.50 per month.
Alderman Schaefer?
Make the motion.
Second? Alderman Condon? Discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, I might look at this and ask some questions of administrator as to the history of the lease amount. And I kind of expected it to have been that way for a few years. We're looking at a three-year lease here at a static $9.50 a month. The history of this goes quite a ways back, but in 2005 and '06, this rental amount was $1,100 a month. It was reduced by council effective September 1st, 2006 to the current $9.50. So it's been there, basically, going on 12 years, 11 and a half years. At this point in time, we're looking at it at a three years. I don't know, I guess I don't quite understand that even any business would expect to hold a rent amount for 14-plus years. So I just, we put it out for consideration to council that we ought to think about. And it's not, it's not the idea of the city's going to make money or lose money or anything about that. It's the idea of fairness issue, I guess, with other businesses in that area. If the minimum, if the minimum here in our packet in the area is $68 per square foot, this is actually 2,088 square feet, that would actually translate into at least $10.50. And also, it's a hundred dollars difference. I think it's just, to me, it just becomes a fairness issue with the other businesses around. They have a static rent rate for 14 years. I do, kind of, just a quick follow-up. I do understand that this is a little different because this lease requires that they pay the first $2,500 of the repair and the first $500 of the water and sewer, which of course, hard to put the back on the ground. But I mean, but still, it is different because usually the landlord would pay for all of that. So I do, I do understand it's a little different than a standard landlord kind of relationship. But I still think that an expectation of a 14-year static lease is a little bit out of balance.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
I can't recall, but what was the reasoning behind, does anybody remember?
Behind what?
Behind what? The reasoning behind it dropped in the rent, the spray?
The economy. Yeah, it was the economy.
I was looking for some help on history from this, and Bill, you can participate too. I didn't go back and pull minutes from that or reports or anything like that. But Marcy was around during the time also and said that it may have been because of the finance committee deciding to lower it, but my guess was it had something to do with the...
Mr. Cobal addressed the council and the finance committee requesting that the lease be reduced because it was too high and the maintenance building was expensive. So the council agreed to reduce the rent because of the maintenance agreement that he had.
And the year that was?
I don't recall, I can't tell you exactly, so I can't, I can't guess. It was, I know that Alderman Murgatroyd was on the finance committee when it occurred.
I'm trying to recall it to myself, I just can't.
I don't believe he was in the council.
If that really gives that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, well, if, you know, I know there were some guests that it was economy, because it's prior to the economy tanking. The economy didn't tank until September of 2008, or maybe slightly before that. But as far as the repairs, I guess then the follow-up question to that is, what have the... I assume we have an accounting then for what the repairs would have been since we are the landlords, so I assume we know what repairs are done to the building. Is it truly, do we have a history then to show that this is truly an expense that's happened?
At the time, there were several sewer backups at that location.
At that time, right, at that time.
Yes.
I'm saying more recently, though.
I believe that bill recovered.
Typically, what we've done is only when the exterior of the building has been needed, has needed repairs, when we step in and pay that. If there's any upgrades or improvements to the building, they can send us bills, but most of the time, and I say they, generally with our leases like the Hickory Creek Farm Lease or the Marina Lease, they'll take care of those internally unless it's something major like the piers or like the building has gotten hit at least three or four times by delivery trucks. In those cases, the city has repaired it. However, anything inside those four walls, they typically have taken care of themselves and not submitted. Well, I don't know, that's because the nature, it hasn't been a major, something that has been improved, but typically, they take care of those themselves.
Is this agreement specific to inside repairs only? Because I don't, I didn't recall seeing that, but, because I know there was a comment that, you know, there haven't been many repairs other than when a vehicle's clipped the corner of the building and then the city's repaired that. And then I believe, I don't know how long it was, there was a roof put on at some point in time. I guess I find myself wondering if we're establishing a lower lease price because of the requirement for paying for repairs, is there any paying for repairs that is ever actually done? If we put a new roof on, where, did it cost $2,500 to the LSE?
When there's been repairs to the exterior of the building, there's been no cost to the LSE. I don't, I can't speak to what has happened or any other repairs internally that he's done on his own. I don't know.
Okay, but is that part of the contract then, it's only interior? Is that...
I'm not sure.
Yeah, just the history of this, to some extent, is, from what I can recall being, when I first sat on the council, and again, things had already gone through already at that time, but when we renegotiated a contract at that time, basically, the situation with the station was, is, as you know, it was never planned to go anywhere further than McHenry as far as the railroad. And the railroad company wasn't really too keen on keeping the station open. That's when the city negotiated with them that we were credited, and then we would make sure it was up kept. And then when the proposal came for Trey and Tom as far as going in there, the idea being that there would be somebody that would maintain the building so that the building, the entire building wasn't left empty. And when they first came in, they were always, well, I'm sure today, they probably still are, they were always quite accommodating to all the people that would use the transit as far as the trains. Make sure the doors were open for them during the winter, and they would always help out all the commuters. And so therefore, that was why, years back, we had looked at as far as a reasonable rent for them because of the fact that they were, they were there for a purpose, and that was more than anything else to keep a business in there, to make that building viable as well as keeping it open for the trans, people using the transit systems. And it wasn't really to make money or compare it to the lease amounts that anybody else was paying. And they were, have always been a good neighbor over there for, and worked with the city on a lot of different things. And like I say, definitely a plus to the community of those that use the rapid transit.
Any other discussion by council? See none?
Just the fact that I can understand what Alderman Curry's stating. I do believe that maybe an increase is, at this time, something we should be looking at, possibly going back to where we were on the original lease agreement before we reduced it. Only because of the fact that, I mean, you're looking at $950, and that was how many years ago. And to some extent, you know, it comes to a time where we, where are we just giving it away rather than, you know? We did put on a new roof that was quite costly a few years back, that the city had eaten. Again, I think to some extent, another hundred, a couple hundred dollars is going to make or break that business. And it does show the fact that we are being a little bit more responsible as far as what we need to collect over it.
Hey, Alderman Condon?
Has there been any consideration from staff to make a recommendation to increase the fee?
No.
We could certainly go back, I mean, if it's 2,088 square feet, I don't include the cooler. If we did that, it would be, I think, another 280. But if we use the 2,088 times the $6 divided by 12 months, it's $1,044. You're looking at $94 more. If council wants, we could certainly go back with that request or that desire and see if they're amenable to it, and we can still bring it back to councilors. I'm assuming there may be a meeting next week also, so we can bring it back next week for consideration.
I would encourage that, I guess.
Pretty direct motion.
Sounds like it's, I'll withdraw your motion, second, we'll put it on next week's agenda.
I'll say what?
Who made the motion?
Alderman Schaefer made, there's a motion on the floor made by Alderman Schaefer.
Second.
Second by Alderman Condon, to approve lease agreement.
I think it's the other way around.
No, I said, well, she can say it.
I don't have a problem doing that.
Either that or motion to table one or two. Second one, withdraw?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. So we'll just put it on next week's agenda, and I'll vote it on the table.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go ahead and motion to table. Alderman Condon, second. Alderman Santi?
I'll say it.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. First individual action item on the agenda this evening is 7A. This is a discussion to approve the transfer of Class A-21 liquor license from Plum Garden Restaurant Incorporated, DBA Plum Garden Restaurant, to Plum Garden LLC, DBA Plum Garden Restaurant, located at 3017 West Main Street, effective May 1st, 2018. I'll just kind of give you some input here on, I met with Jason Moy, which is the applicant. He's here this evening in the front row here. Has had no issues, he's obviously, his father had this business and he's taking it over. So it's nice to see that the place is staying open. And, you know, Jason's been running the restaurant for many, many years, so that's all I have. No liquor issues in the past. And at this time, open up for discussion by council. Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, I just want to mention that that's second generation, which you're actually a third generation running it, isn't it?
True, yes.
So it has been here a long, long time.
Thank you. Alderman Condon?
Yeah, I was going to make that point as well, that three generations and, and that the president, Mr. Moy, has been actually running the restaurant anyway. And this is just making it all official. And I, for one, want to keep that established. President McHenry, I know it's well-loved by many.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? I see none. At this time, looking for a motion to approve the transfer of Class A-21 liquor license for Plum Garden Restaurant Incorporated, DBA Plum Garden Restaurant, to Plum Garden LLC, DBA Plum Garden Restaurant, located at 3017 West Main Street, effective May 1st, 2018. Alderman Curry? I mean, Alderman Santi?
I will, I will make that motion as presented.
Alderman Curry, for the second?
I'll second, since I was mentioned.
Thank you. Last discussion on this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Good luck, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Next item on the agenda is 7V, to have a discussion approval fiscal year 2018-19 liquor license renewals. Open up for discussion by council regarding these licenses. Alderman Santi?
Okay, and then there's two or three on here that they did not submit their licenses, is that correct?
There is three. At this time.
Thus, they will be eliminated off this list?
As. So we are reaching out to these businesses, but as far as keeping them on the list, Marcy, are we going to keep them?
If they don't pay, if by the time the license expires on August 30th at midnight, then they will be removed from the list.
April 30th?
April 30th at midnight, yeah, they will be removed from the list.
So actually, the motion is to approve the entire list except those three are approved, contingent upon their paying their fees?
Correct, that's what the agenda supplement says, yes.
I knew that.
I know for the questions. Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Alderman Glenn?
Just the fact that you have it redlined as far as the establishments that have video gaming. Just the fact, on a note that the percentage is quite high, but we know where video gaming's been going, and there are a few names on here that you know that it's coming forward very shortly. So, just so that's no surprise to council.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
And just a correction, I believe Nicolinos should be red.
And if this is for 2018, 2019, and they don't intend to pursue gaming?
Oh, okay, correct. I thought it was all the gaming, sorry.
Alderman Curry?
Not really about these liquor licenses, but just a general comment, since legal gaming was brought up. I actually recently looked, because somebody asked me. And if I counted correctly, and it's just general background information, McHenry's like the 15th highest number of video gaming terminals in the state of Illinois, so of any community in the state. So, just put it in the back of your minds as to how much we actually have compared to other communities that are even larger than us. So, I just throw it out there for consideration, for some future point in time.
Thank you, Alderman Curry. Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, I guess we're always striving for number one, aren't we?
Any other discussion? See none? Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, sorry, I'm looking for, looking for a motion to approve fiscal year 2018-19 liquor license renewals. Alderman Condon?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Curry?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item on the agenda is to have a discussion adopting an ordinance authorizing the execution of a development and economic incentive agreement between the City of McHenry and Graham Enterprise Incorporated relating to the demolition and redevelopment of McHenry BP gas station located at 5301 Bull Valley Road 3, and demolition of the vacant building located at 4410 West Elm Street. If I could, Doug, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. The city council is being asked to consider a development and economic incentive agreement with Graham Enterprise Inc. to offset extraordinary development expenses related to the following, raising the existing facility at the southwest corner of Bull Valley Road and Crystal Raising the existing facility at the southwest corner of Bull Valley Road and Crystal Lake Road. Raising the existing facility at the northeast corner of Ringwood Road and Illinois Route one twenty. Raising the vacant office building at forty-four ten West Elm Street. That's the building just east of the Dunkin' Donuts on Elm Street. Development of a fueling station at the, potential development of a fueling station at the northeast corner of Ringwood Road and Illinois Route one twenty. And then redevelopment of a new fueling station at the southwest corner of Bull Valley Road and Crystal Lake Road. And the applicants, Mr. John Graham and his associate are here to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Doug. Open up for discussion by council. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, uh, in the, in the packet, it talks about the, you know, the incentive is, is to basically fifty-fifty split on the sales tax revenue. And indicates in here that the redevelopment is expected, generate additional forty-three thousand per year. What is the current sales tax revenue?
So the current, the current's, uh, sales tax revenue at Crystal Lake, Bull Valley?
Do you have those numbers? Is round numbers? I have everything. This is, I'm just looking for round, just a round. Could you step to the podium?
You have approximate sales tax that are at Bull Valley, Crystal Lake Road?
Doug, I provided that stuff on one of the earliest.
Yeah, chart. The forty-three was, was as additional, um. I don't have that number off the top of my head. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't have the number. The C store is about four times the size of what it is now, but I don't have that number.
I, I guess my point is on the, on the sales tax incentive that we provide, and this would be true, not only to this one, but any of them I look at, and this one's pretty cut and dry, and some of them get more complicated. It, it seems to me that what we should be looking at doing is, is setting whatever we're getting, whatever the sales tax base is today. And however we want to do that, you know, last two-year average or something. But whatever, whatever the sales tax revenue is now and, and essentially providing the incentive based on the increase, not on what's happening today, because the way this is structured, there is no requirement to, to actually build anything at Ringwood and one twenty, so we're just talking about the one location in effect. And I, I was hoping to get that number because if you split whatever the revenue is that we have today, and you split, let's assume for the moment, just for sake of argument, it's forty thousand dollars. Maybe it's not that much, I don't know. But for sake of argument, if it, if it's forty today and we split that for the next twenty years and Ringwood and Bull Valley, or, uh, Ringwood and and one twenty never actually get built, then essentially, we, the taxpayers, are paying for twenty years, we're paying four hundred thousand dollars. And the benefit is that we have two buildings taken down.
No. I, I don't think that's true. He's making a three million dollar investment in building a new station. Plus, we're, we're not getting, we're splitting the fifty-fifty, so we're not, we're not getting any less than we're getting now. Plus, he's making a three million dollar investment in the station.
Well, I don't understand that math because if we're, if we're getting forty now and the increase is going to be forty-three, for example, then the future's going to be eighty-three, we split that in half.
Alderman Curry, maybe I can help a little bit. I think when we presented the idea to the city, it was on the basis not that, that what's existing today is, is, you know, something that's perpetual. I mean, we're dealing with an older facility that, that when we bought it, it was closed. We reopened it with enough investment to get it underway and it created a, you know, a viable location that's given us some confidence to rebuild it. But, but what we're dealing with is an asset that's coming to end of life. And I think what we feel is that, that we're a small business. We've been in McHenry for over sixty years. Just have some recognition of a third generation. I just happen to be that representative for our family. It isn't at that location that, that we began, but we purchased both of those assets from BP and, as you know, they were probably close for, I would say in excess of six or seven years is where I think for sure they were. I don't know that for sure. We bought it in two thousand and nine. The tanks were removed at the Ringwood facility before we got involved. With a fairly reasonable investment, we were able to, to bring the place at Bull Valley and Crystal Lake Blacktop back into existence. And we've demonstrated some success, but I would say for sure, we're, we're at that point where we have no choice but to reinvest in a location that we're open will be for the fight for, you know, twenty-plus years. The choice really that, that we've kind of presented the city with is that, that at that site, if we were to not receive the incentive, we don't feel that, that, that we're in a position to make that kind of investment as a small business. There was some demonstration that, that McHenry has looked at guys like us favorably from a business standpoint. That's where our discussion began, but, but it, it even contemplated, you know, an incremental increase. But I, but I think that the, the possibility is that, that we don't make the investment at that site. Potentially, it's either hand it off to somebody else who's not as fearful of us just carrying on with a, an asset that's ended life and, and changes the use. There's activity in the city today and clearly the industry has changed dramatically. I mean, the kind of facilities that are being built, I think, is not in the city limits today, but just east of you at Darryl Road would be comparable to what we're picturing for that site. But I guess in my discussions with Doug and the administration, I'm suggesting that, that you don't look at it as something that's, you know, just above the perpetual. It's, it's really, you know, an investment in, in the future and that's how we propose it. We've not tried to structure the agreement so that it looks like our activity at Ringwood is optional, gets, you know, we're aware of the fact that there are some other activity in the city and that to us appears a little greener than, than our confidence level at Bull Valley, but, but we're not afraid to invest in McHenry. We've got five sites. We've never asked for any economic incentive, but, but we do see it in other communities that we're operating in. And we operate in a number of Lake McHenry County communities and so. All we're really trying to do is make certain that an investment that we're making is one that we can get a return on. And that, that we're choosing to continue to invest in places that we're comfortable in and not only because, in this case, we've been here for so long, but because we think that, that we're kind of known to that community as somebody that's a pretty good citizen, so. I think that it's, it's, it's easy to look at it like, you know, we already have this in hand, why would we give more? But I think that could be easily someone else sitting here after that site changes use and asking for exactly the same thing that we are and making no more in, in investment than we are, but probably without a story that, that they've been here for sixty years.
I apologize, Director Curry, sorry, Alderman Curry. Director Lynch has told me that we get about fifty-six thousand dollars cor- currently.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, and don't misunderstand, I, I'm all for the development, it's just that when we structure these, these, uh, these rebates, I think we have to look, and we even say it in our package, we have to look very carefully at each one. And my concern is that the way, the way this is written, as I understood it, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, we're going to tear down three sites and we're going to rebuild the Bull Valley, Crystal Lake site. And the convenience store is going to be three times the size or something like that. Goes from nineteen hundred square feet to forty-eight hundred square feet or something like that. And so we have fifty-six thousand in, in sales tax revenue now and we're going to increase it to forty-three. We're gonna, we think it's going to go up to forty-three. I guess all I'm saying is that when we do these, these deals, these sales tax rebates, we should exclude the, the sales tax revenue that is currently coming in. And then the increase is what the incentive is based on. And then also, if the other site is, is built, as I understood it, if it's built, which is not, there's no guarantees that that will happen, then of course, there would be the, this additional sales tax revenue from that site as well, which again, would be a fifty-fifty split.
Right. This, this agreement was a bit different because we were structuring three different sites and we wanted to accomplish three different things. I think Mr. Graham, he knows he wants to rebuild the Bull Valley location and he wants to stay ahead of the curve because that station is doing very well and he, and he wants to rebuild that site and invest right away in that site. That's, that's a no-brainer in his mind. The, the Ringwood one twenty site is a bit of a wild card at this juncture because, because you got, you got Speedway at that location.
Understood. That's why I'm saying, the only, the only real guarantees at this point built in is that there's a, there's an investment, obviously, in the Bull Valley, Crystal Lake Road site. There's a, a, a projected increase in sales tax at that site and there will be two other buildings that are taken down. Those are the only things that are absolutely going to happen.
But that, that to me is also a benefit.
Oh, no, I didn't say it wasn't. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to describe what it is.
Right, you're right, you're right.
I didn't say it wasn't. So I guess the question is, if you take, if you look at fifty-six thousand, you divide it half, multiply by twenty years, is the benefit to the city, and it's a question for, for all of us, is the benefit to the City of McHenry equivalent to that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars or whatever it would come out to? My math is probably a little off, but maybe it's more than that.
I.
Yes, it is more than that. It's five hundred thousand plus. So, so the taxpayer is actually on a hook in, in a way for five hundred thousand dollars for two buildings to come down.
I, I just don't want somebody to go on one of the other corners and then this site will stay and kind of, in its current state and not get reinvested in. We're trying to, that's.
Yeah, I understand.
That's kind of what I'm looking at.
I guess my point is to describe for all of us, I mean, to me, I can boil it down to that.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not against women necessarily, although some people, maybe not sitting here, but some people are, are really questioning. I got one call in us that, why are we doing the picking and choosing winners? You know, that, that was a call that I had received. And so they're, pretty much, the point is, they were, they were indicating, why do we do this at all? I, I think we have done that in the past, not necessarily totally opposed to that. That's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying when we structure, you know, we got to look really carefully when we're, because there's no guarantee you get forty-three thousand either, to be honest.
Right.
You could redo it, I, I think it's probably a very low percentage chance, but you could redo it and you could have the same sales tax you have now. Or you could have an increase over time based on the economy, but so there's no real guarantees there either. And I understand that too. We all run risks, I mean, you know, we all have to accept risks.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I would let everybody else.
Alderman left?
Yeah, I just think it's quite a bit of a dollar for the taxpayers to pay to have those three buildings torn down. In light of the fact that I've been pushing for a couple of times now as far as the fact that we need to tear down ordinance. We have, we have buildings in the town that are obsolete and when they become obsolete and they become a nice sort of the community, we should have something in place to have those things raised. How much is it going to cost us to get rid of the, uh, the old lumberyard that's at the corner of Crystal Lake and one twenty that's been deplorable for fifteen years or better? I mean, you get more sunlight that comes through that roof than, than, than the roof holds back. And, uh, you know, we've got, we've got different spots in the community. I blogged Russ, there were, got a house torn down, down one twenty, a little further down west. It was a nice or, or property owner, but we need ordinances in place for that. And I'll be honest with you, I cannot vote yes on this in the language that it is unless I see a commitment on this as well, that the gas station at one twenty at Ringwood gets built. Because I'll tell you right now, there's more talk in the community about that gas station and how it's been needed for the last ten years than I ever hear about Bull Valley and Crystal Lake Road. Now, you know, what's odd or shocking when you think of when your facility at Bull Valley and, uh, Crystal Lake Road was built, uh, we didn't give any incentives. In fact, we required the developer at that time to build the sewer line all the way from the hospital to the gas station. And gas stations were lucrative enough to where, yes, they weren't happy with it, but they built it because they wanted that gas station. Yeah, it was a little tough at the beginning, but as more and more peoples were heading south down Crystal Lake Road, I think more and more, they picked up the traffic. And, and like I said, a million dollars to tear down three buildings and just have one of them reopen as far as concrete of exactly what's, I think a million dollars is way out of line and I won't support it.
Alderman Schaefer?
I just want to, I have one question and one clarification. In, on page seventy-six, the second paragraph, first full paragraph, it says, "No sales tax incentive shall be paid to the owner from Ringwood or Bull Valley site unless the Ringwood site and Bull Valley sites are rebuilt in their entirety." So nothing's getting paid out unless both those sites are redone? No, the, there, there was a possibility that he could reopen the Ringwood and one twenty site without rebuilding it. So if he did that, he would not get an incentive from that site?
That's, that's my point. If it's not rebuilt in its entirety, there's no.
Right, but he could get an incentive if the Crystal Lake site was rebuilt.
But then in the next paragraph, if you read that, if the Ringwood site's reopened without being rebuilt, there's no sales tax incentive paid for that site. But the Bull Valley site would be?
Yes.
Yes, include, yes.
Yes. As long as he builds the Bull Valley side, he'll continue, he will, he will get the sales tax revenue.
I just, I know that there is a, or has been, you know, some attention brought to why would we keep that building up? Just recently, and it took some time to do it, we acquired some property around it. We, we just chose not to open that site. I think unfortunately, had we have moved quicker or had we had any luck moving quicker and acquiring the additional property, we probably would have gone forward. I don't picture us being a, you know, any distraction from the multinational corporations growth plan, but, but it's possible that had we have moved forward, that Speedway wouldn't have been as interested at that corner as they are today. It took over a year to acquire property that we just wouldn't build on the site that we had previously. But today, we do have the option of, with a much lesser investment, opening that site and competing with a little different business plan. I'm not suggesting that we think that that's a real option, but it could be for someone else. And so we've retained the possibility of reopening that site. But, but for always, we've been focused and been in touch with the school district for many years in terms of the possibility of buying additional property. I think earlier, Alderman Glab, you know, that, that there was no incentive given to the developer on those two sites. Those two sites were built and developed and opened, you know, almost thirty years ago by Amoco Oil Company. The difference between Amoco Oil Companies, Marathon Petroleum and us is just night and day. I don't, I don't think Marathon, this, this type of a request doesn't even hit their radar, probably for two reasons. One is that they don't think that they would ever be considered seriously for an ask. And, and secondly, I think they know they've already received incentive on, on the levels that are proceeding and the consideration that we ask for here. But this is the only avenue that we have to ask as a family business with, nobody, we own the, the property, we own the retailing responsibility. And, you know, it's a, it's a real calculation of, of going forward that, that we've made. It isn't to fool anyone or to ask for something that, that we haven't asked for previously. The, the complication in our industry is that, I mean, you read the papers, there's, you know, electricity, there's all kinds of alternative energies that continue to present themselves, so the risk in redeveloping a site like this. So the risk in redeveloping a site like this is real to someone like us, because we don't, we're not a vertically integrated oil company. And, you know, the other point that I think that should be made and it's complicated, the price of oil dictates more than anything the sales tax that's granted. So betting that the price of oil would double, you know, in an incremental increase, might be a hope that we'd have to get a real return, but the pressure we've got is that there's declining categories within the convenience store and yet the development is real and the cost is, is something that we're trying to convey is, that's a viable corner, this is a viable investment from our standpoint, but it, the family business requires some incentive from the city. We thought, we saw that demonstrated earlier and simply got into discussion over the possibility of how to move faster, then we would be comfortable with that.
And my second question is the, when it states the raising of the buildings in its entirety, does that include at the Bull Valley location removing the tanks as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, and when I said, you know, end it live, I think that, you know, the infrastructure and the ground is really, you know, specifically what I'm talking about. We don't have any fears that we have, you know, a compliance issue or otherwise, but we do think that, you know, that we're taking chances that are complicated further by having a business model that just doesn't compete in today's environment. So, you know, a five-thousand square foot store is dramatically different than what we have today as a guest, what the customers' expectations are is entirely different than they were twenty-some years ago. And so is the competitive environment and the, and the likelihood of us becoming somebody that does what we're doing today is not likely at all. I think that we're more likely to become, you know, food service alternative than we are to be generating the kind of sales tax we do today on cigarettes, which is by far the biggest category in that store. It's the, you know, likely fifty percent of the store revenue is in the cigarette category. You don't build a five-thousand square foot store for the protection of that category. We picture that as probably everybody in this room does, disappearing over time and it's happening for all kinds of reasons, including, you know, good moves on cities' parts moving each specific product to an age that's about what it's up to today. These are the difficulties that we're faced with as a family business and that's the spirit of the agreement. Taking down the office building at forty-four-ten isn't something that's needed. We could easily make that, you know, a viable tenancy. We've chose to make it so that we can create more commercial enterprise by taking it down and expanding what's already there as somewhat an adequate business model compared to what you're probably reading, not only in our submission, but in what Speedway's doing. We do think that we could commit additional investment to even that site and make not only the site viable, but the likelihood of a car wash to come forward in a way that might make us a kind of difficult and continuing difficult competitor to even a Speedway model that's relying on a little more of what we've suggested, we rely on it, possibly blacked up and moved out. So, these are the complications we're faced with, but they're, you know, something that we're trying to present in a way where the city can picture. Somebody like us who's done things that aren't necessarily only in the industry, I just wanna remind the council, I don't know how many are here, we took the vacant gas station just to the west of us at Ramble, which was in bankruptcy, left with tanks on the ground and environmental problem. We bought the Dunkin' Donuts next to it and then developed that. So, you know, McHenry's a place that we've continued to invest in, but our ask today is different than in, you know, situations that have proceeded. And as I said earlier, we've not asked, asked for anything other than just to continue right to do business in McHenry.
Thank you. Alderman.
One, I just wanna state that, I was the first one to come up with incentives, looking at it years back, and that was because of the recent annexation at the time of Winder Lake with the Amely property and the airstrip out there. Knowing what they were planning on, and I had known that a couple of the bigger businesses had been approached of whether or not they would even be interested in possibly going that way. And I knew that we needed to look at the corridor about one-twenty, all the way up to Ringwood as far as incentives, because of the fact that we needed to get that built back up before a new shopping area is what might be across from the pit, one-twenty could develop. However, incentives, and maybe we need to change our criteria a little, because yes, if he rebuilds his gas station and makes it a larger variety area or whatever, he's gonna do more business, we're gonna get more sales tax dollars. But where does that sales tax dollar come in from? Are we generating more, more of an economy in the city, or is it just that those tax dollars that would normally, or that money that would normally be spent in another gas station or another seven-eleven or White End or whatever is not gonna be spent to his facility? So what are we gaining? I mean, we're actually losing revenue. Because when we give that incentive, yes, okay, we get development and granted it will balance out as far as property taxes. However, the sales tax is just, it's like video gaming. When we first came up with video gaming, it was successful for those that started, what, first ten or twelve or fourteen, and then all of a sudden we spread out and spread out. Yeah, you get a little bit more gaming, but look at how much less, forty, fifty percent in some of these locations that the revenue has dropped because of the amount of different places that have video gaming. He's looking at a truck stop, that's one of the criterias in the business plan, and I applaud you, it could happen in your business plan. I mean, you know, not applauding you that you wanna open up another one, because we've got so many of them now that some of us are concerned about. But again, it's not drawing people into the city to spend more money. You're not gonna see, you know, people have to buy gas. Is he gonna buy it from him, or is he gonna buy it from Speedway, or is he gonna buy it from, you know, the marathon over there by the post office? People are gonna buy gas, they need to buy gas, they're gonna buy gas. Whereas some cases, if they're smart enough, they might not even buy it in the city of McHenry, because depending, sometimes McHenry's a bargain for gas prices and a lot of times it isn't. And if they're on the way home from work and they see gas prices, if they are watching the prices as on their way home, depending on how far they travel, they may find different locations that are cheaper, they're gonna stop there, they're not gonna stop in McHenry just because it's McHenry. I mean, I applaud anybody that would wanna support the money, but, you know, support the city with sales revenue. And what's our main goal? Well, I guess there isn't a main goal exactly as far as economic development. Economic development should be that we're building our revenues for the city, but it's also for accommodation. I mean, you know, if you went back forty years ago and you didn't have a Walmart, you didn't have a Kmart in town, and people had to actually go all the way down to Elgin to shop a bigger store like Kmart in those days, and they were just belated when one opened up in Crystal Lake, and then it was really something when one opened up in McHenry. But we brought one here to McHenry because what? We want to supply our residents with a total package of living in this town. And, you know, development for these type of places, again, doesn't add to the convenience, you know, other than opening up one on Ringwood and one-twenty. Of course, the Speedway opens up next, across the street, the residents that have been crying for years over on that corner are gonna get a gas station. Question is, is who and why not too? You know, competition's always good. Doug, you remember talking to a furniture store that didn't even wanna come into the city of McHenry unless there was another one for competition, because some of them, that's what they like. They want that, you know, so. And I've seen in a lot of places, Speedway's down in Caden County and everything else, that, you know, there's always the price wars and everybody's matching everybody else, nobody wants to undercut the other one because then it's a constant war back and forth. But like I say, all you're doing is you're splitting the revenue that would come in, that we'd be getting from other gas stations and going to his location, and that's where I really have a problem with supporting this.
Alderman.
I respectfully ask that each Alderman get a chance to speak once before other Aldermen talk a second time, but with that said, I, a couple things. I just wanna clarify that the citizens aren't paying, it's just that we're not getting the revenue. I think it was said that the citizens would be paying for this tax, they're not paying for it, it's just, we're not collecting all of it, we would be giving it away as an incentive. I had a question on what was the plan for the forty-four-ten Elm Street, but it sounds like nothing, it would be, it would just be demolished at this time?
Right.
Okay, is there a timeline that you have for that to be redeveloped, or?
Yeah, I mean, what we picture is one of the alternatives is just to expand the existing operation and potentially provide, you know, technology and some improvements that are more aligned with what the car wash industry is doing, and we think we can improve that location. It didn't come as a part of the incentive agreement because at this time, sales tax not charged on car washes, but that's not just in McHenry, that's, you know, it's considered a service. I think that could change in time, we're committed to the car wash business and have, you know, presented the plan at Ringwood as something with a, you know, I think a much more viable method of going forward with that industry, but...
But is there a timeline?
We would take down the building and present to the city the possibility of this improvement, it would have to be approved, it would be a pay station and a few things that are, you know, in line with just doing a little bit more business, you know, in terms of the customer expects of that, so.
I guess, maybe you can't answer this, but I'm wondering, would timeframe as far as, would it be after developments, potential developments of the two other locations, or?
The office building has to be down by twenty-nineteen, December thirty-first.
Yeah, that was...
I realize that, but I mean, the redevelopment, that...
Oh, there's no timeline, I don't think it's...
No, it's just one of the options, I think, you know, long-term. When we first began this discussion, we thought even the possibility of taking that site out of the industry and putting the one in, you know, if we could come up with a viable alternative for that site. You know, everything that we picture is commercial in mind, and, you know, we think, and it's been brought up, that the industry is changing, and it is. Walmart, Meyer, and these guys come in, I don't know if they're given incentives, but they, their business plan includes, you know, using Yes Lane as a loss leader. Thornton, where they built, they built right on the county line, and they have an incentive for customers to do business with them, because Lake County doesn't have a motor fuel tax that McHenry does. But we continue to compete with that to keep the business in McHenry. And we compete with Walmart, we're not in the same league with these guys, but from a convenience standpoint, you know, there's people that look at that site even at that price and figure, I'd prefer to do business, you know, on a little different terms with more convenience, and this is the kind of investment that we're, you know, presenting to the city, so.
Okay, I, just as a comment moving forward, I agree with Alderman Curry about the fifty-fifty split on the sales tax, that it should be on the additional new revenue, not the client's sales tax revenue.
You know, I should add in here, maybe some of you who are newer don't know, but we've written those agreements before. Gary Ling is based on that, if I remember, and his base is four-hundred, and it was everything above that.
I remember that.
We did somebody else, and I can't remember the guy's name.
Sunny Side.
The Dodge?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we have experience doing that, and this agreement originally, back in February or even maybe before that, had the car wash in it originally. So there was more improvements that were going to be built for the same million-dollar sales tax. And then Doug and John talked, and it just wasn't looking real, so, you know, there was no need to put it in there if it wasn't real. So the car wash, which is, that was a lot of money, right? Three million?
Yeah.
It was a big improvement. So we went from seven million down to four, or whatever. So it was a big drop in the proposed improvements on the three sites as a whole, down to virtually one site with two demolitions.
But I wouldn't eliminate the second site, I'm just telling you that we're more of the thing.
Yeah, right, no, it was the right thing to do, I want them to know the history of it, because they're not involved.
But I also think of the feeling that maybe Ringwood's not gonna happen. I don't feel that way at all, I think it's in the agreement for some reason, that it's a viable possibility, a corner like that, it's just not within our level of confidence at this time to make any guarantees.
You don't wanna make a commitment, right.
And we did consider the way, we did consider what, exactly what you're stating, we considered fifty percent of the new revenue.
Right, okay. And then the last thing, I just wanted to state that while I would love to see that Ringwood site, I, the Bull Valley site is in my word, and I know it's busy all the time, I go through that intersection all the time, and so I'm glad to see that it will be even further improved, and so that's great, fully supportive of that. The Ringwood site, however, and while I would love to see that being operational again, I have great concerns about the truck stop element of it. And I'll be quite honest, I had three kids who went through Parkland School and know that there were a lot of times there were activities out in the fields, and just having a truck stop there, coming in and out. I go through that intersection to get to work every day, and because I make my own schedules with my business, sometimes I'm going through there at times where school's starting in the morning or getting out in the afternoon, and it's hazardous. I had a bus that pulled out, I had the right of way and a bus pulled out in front of me because they're so anxious to try to get out of Parkland at that, at the end of the school day. And, I mean, I think there will be a cost, if this went through as presented, there will be a cost to the city and/or school, because I think we'd have to have a crossing guard there, or a police officer, excuse me, not just a crossing guard, but to direct traffic. So we're gonna incur some expenses. Now, just with having a gas station, but especially if there's trucks and school buses, I'm just, that makes me very concerned. And again, I don't have kids there anymore, but I still have concerns about the kids out there and with larger vehicles there. Not that I don't think a truck stop in that, at that corner would be good, but not next to a school.
Alderman, the only thing I would leave you with is that your picture of a truck stop is, you know, where that connotation, I think, you know, becomes negative. What we're picturing is only doing business with the commercial vehicles that are at the intersection already and just have nowhere that accommodates them properly. So from a safety standpoint, we could offer diesel at forty-four-ten, you know, and all we would do is probably intimidate lots of just, you know, regular vehicle traffic. And so the idea that it's a truck stop, you know, leaves the, from a commercial standpoint, the possibility of video gaming. And so the idea that it's a truck stop, you know, leaves the, from a commercial standpoint, the possibility of video gaming. But what I picture as a truck stop is a 50-acre facility along the interstate. And usually it's under the name of Pilot or Truck Stop South America. What we're providing is for the guy that has a state truck and is, you know, maybe from the lumberyard or, you know, there's just a lot of, you know, commercial vehicles that aren't big semis.
That's what I was picturing, the semi.
The gravel trucks is a possibility and yet, you know, a lot of those guys have their own fueling facilities and we don't even have a chance at it. But most of the vehicles that we pictured doing business with in the facility as we drew it, aren't gonna create traffic that isn't already there. And in most cases, it wouldn't be the 18-wheeler that you're picturing unless it's, you know, the semi that's all the gravel open down the street already, so.
Okay.
It isn't, you know, the high-volume location that the interstates are, and the parking and all that business is just fortunately, it's the only name that's used in the industry, but it's just simply commercial fueling and separated from the gas station vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Alden McCann?
Yeah, I just want to state the fact that, again, I want to see the redevelopment of the Ringwood Road and 120. If we're not only gonna talk about raising three buildings and only building up one, then I think we ought to take this incentive and reevaluate it and bring it back at another date to the council because I think a million dollars is way out of line. Again, he's really not bringing a new product to the city. All he's doing is rehabbing what he's got and taking down a couple buildings that if we ever create that ordinance as far as obsolete buildings, a gas station would be one of the first ones, probably the top 10 in the city to be taken down. So I mean, to some extent, again, we're not, we're not developing any new sales tax by him redeveloping that land. And all we're doing is, is number one, we're giving him a edge over other businesses that are in town that do the same business. So we're helping out one person as far as competition for redevelopment. And again, the whole idea of this was not supposed to be for redevelopment, but development of something new and good in old obsolete parcels. And I just think to some extent, yes, the taxpayers aren't paying for this because if they're, they're getting the sales tax off of gas that's being bought somewhere else in the city and it's just coming out of their pocket into his establishment. And then we're paying half of that back to them, then yeah, we are paying. The taxpayers are paying the tax. And I just don't see where the city should be paying for that, for development. I don't see, I don't see that kind of a benefit for a million dollars.
The only thing I would add or try to create perspective for you, and I realize I'm out here battling here a little bit, but most of the facilities in McHenry can't exist in the future competing against the new sites that are coming forward. When you look at the Woodmans being built at 12 and 120 and exactly where Thornton, this is, you know, recent development, the Thornton at 12 and the Speedway right across the street from McHenry should be concerned that that's where the business is gonna start to move to because these are facilities that are, whether they're being incentivized or not, they will be where the customers are attracted. And I supply some other stuff in the area and I know the volume that they do. And I know the volume that we do is somewhat artificial based on the overhead that we inject to a site. But we recognize that as something that's a little bit like beating your head on the wall. We're not gonna outdo the competition with that facility. So what we will do is sell a site like that, and we're selling stuff commonly, and then we're chasing, where are we gonna get a return on a $3 million investment? In the kind of, you know, atmosphere that we're in where we almost look like you're ignoring the headlines. And so having a good citizen within the city, creating a convenience and protecting the business in McHenry is part of the story you gotta hear. Or you'll likely find that guys that operate that facility do half the business that we do because they don't inject the strength that a company like us has been at it as long, injects into it. But we're trying to protect and find places to make investment and we just happen to find one that's worthy of the future. But if somebody builds across the street or we choose to sell that thing, and it's not a threat, I just want you to know what we're looking at is, is lots of different communities and trying to figure out how to make an investment and get a return and employ local people. So everything I'm telling you is true, that everything that we sell today is changing. Everything that, you know, that we are placing hope on is, you know, creating new infrastructure going forward. And so I can only tell you that what we've done today is somewhat artificial and some of the categories that we're selling today have to be replaced. And they can't be replaced in a place like that. So if you're really eliminate the possibility of us making the investment on the basis of only a contribution towards the incremental, then, you know, I don't know what we do, but it's probably not full building permit in the next couple of months.
I understand that. But, you know, you're in the business, so you probably know the history of McHenry as far as gas stations. You know how many, you know, if, and I don't have the exact number right now, but I used to have it written down. But basically, if you went back 25 years ago and what the population of McHenry was and how many gas stations we had. And as of maybe three or four years ago, we had a plus three or plus four gas, amount of gas stations in this city. And we more than doubled in size and population. So that means that we have a lot more gas that's being pumped out of those gas stations and yet they could survive 20 years earlier that kind of amount of gas stations per capita. And there's that many more cars per household and there's been development further north and further west of the town that comes through the town and spends their money at our gas stations as well. So there's been a huge influx in the amount of business of gas stations and I'm glad to see more competition in our gas stations.
You just gotta be careful.
And I, hey, I gotta admit, I'd rather see another gas station open up than another mattress store, you know, but.
Well, you know, guys like us, I think in the end, I don't know what the incentive is, but you can look at the motor fuel tax and the sales tax generated on gasoline by a Walmart and a.
Well, no, no, don't talk, I don't think motor fuel taxes by how much gas we sell. I believe motor fuel taxes is by population, isn't it?
No, I think it's per gallon.
Motor fuel tax is what you pay. What we get is a different formula.
Well, I think the sales tax is a big component that you get, but you do get a portion for the roads of the McHenry County Motor Fuel Tax, which is four cents. And you get a piece of the state, which is 19. And I don't know that you get a federal contribution, but that's 13. And so the sales tax really is the big component. And, you know, guys like Walmart and these guys are putting in gasoline and they're putting guys like us out of business. And so what you can count on is that once there isn't guys like us competing, the price will go up. And what you can count on is that a place like Sam's Club, not Sam's, but Thornton, built, you know, at Darrell Road. And I don't know the figures, but I know the business well enough to tell you they're probably doing 400,000 gallons a month. That's just an estimate. That business is common principally from McHenry and that business wasn't there before. So when you don't protect these kind of conversations, you end up with beneficiaries that either don't ask for the incentive because they get it somewhere else, like a multinational corporation. They do business with Marathon, I know what they have in terms of resource. So I think they'd be laughed out of the room in the discussion we're having. But it doesn't change the fact that guys like us are still, you know, part of the McHenry fabric and that you want guys like us investing. And you don't want guys that can't compete against those kind of factors or are afraid to make the investment. So that's, it's a tough call for you guys because I think you are looking at it like, hey, we already got this. But what I can be certain of is that you won't have it for long. Not because we're gonna leave, but because that site in the long run will be something that the customers choose not to do business with. So, I mean, I'd look and find a reasonable middle ground. I can't suggest one other than, you know, in the form that I have where we have to recreate ourselves and we're counting on some help from McHenry to do it. And that nothing that we've suggested was made in a, you know, kind of a bait and switch forum. Had, as I said, we would probably be building that one on Ringwood today if it wasn't for the length of time it took to acquire the additional.
I understand that, but again, I have to look at the fact that you're not really creating any additional sales in the city of McHenry on gas. You're just taking it from others if you redevelop that property. Aren't people that are coming from other towns that are gonna come to your station because you rebuilt it?
Yeah, they will though because this is the kind of site that people prefer, so.
Are you gonna advertise and you're gonna tell people from Fox Lake to come to your station in McHenry?
No, but we'll do the same thing that Thornton did and attract the business from McHenry. We'll compete and we've got.
From McHenry, from other establishments?
You just happen to be having the benefit of.
So we're not gaining any extra sales tax if we're just splitting the pie and giving you a larger share? And that incentive is actually helping you develop your property to be more competitive with the rest of the gas stations that, whether they're here or they're coming in. But that's basically what that incentive is doing. And that's as far as I'm gonna argue with you on that. I understand the system and I understand what's going on and that's why I cannot vote yes on this proposal. And that's it, I haven't got any more to say.
Thank you.
I know.
Alden Schaefer? I'd like to see this move forward too. For one main reason is what the proposal is, is for a location, we're stuck on gas, but we don't have a facility like they're proposing doing in Henry today. So it would be completely different than what we have today. The closest thing we have, and I went through this in my head, it'd probably be the Buc-E's at Mobile on Colton Lake Road and Richmond Road.
So on 31. Like Sam, Mrs. Lippert?
Well, that's another one of your locations, but that's a small footprint store too, right? The BP on 31 and Charles Miller?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're, I mean, what's being proposed for these two locations is totally different from anything that's existing today. And I think a good example that you brought up several times is the Thornton's. And that, that style and that footprint and that type of business is what customers are looking for today. I totally see that. It's rare that the locations that just do gas are gonna be around much longer at all if, if they make it that far. So I, the one thing I do need to clear up, and Doug, this is for you, but that statement again on page 76, it says, "No sales tax incentives shall be made to the owner from the Ringwood site or the Bull Valley Road site unless the Ringwood site and Bull Valley sites are rebuilt in their entirety." That contradicts what you said to me before. I just want that clarified.
Where is that in the agreement, Doug?
I'm trying to find it. It's not even 76. The statement that Alden Schaefer just read does not agree with what's in the agreement.
Do anybody know what?
Is it in the supplement?
Yes.
It's on the supplement?
On.
Or, yeah. The supplement's wrong then. So, yeah, that's in the supplement, so.
The supplement.
The sub, so if he rebuilds, if he totally rebuilds the Crystal Lake Road site, he gets sales tax rebate from that site. If he totally rebuilds the Ringwood Road site, he gets from that site. But if he rebuilds the Bull Valley site and he opens the Ringwood site without rebuilding it, he does not get it from the Ringwood Road site. So I made an incorrect statement.
It's the third paragraph under number three of the agreement.
Yes, it is clear in the agreement that he does not get it if he does not rebuild it. So the statement, Ringwood site and Bull Valley sites are rebuilt in their entirety. It doesn't have to be both.
Well, I'm just saying that's what it states in the supplement.
Yeah, then I apologize, the supplement's incorrect.
That's what I needed clarification on, thanks.
Any other discussion by council?
I'm sorry.
I see what you're saying.
The one thing, that's, a couple things are just going back and forth in my mind on this is, I know you're not willing to commit to the corner of Ringwood Road and 120 tonight. But this is part of the packet and it mentions that you review how things transpire, you know, what happens, you know, down the line at that corner. In your mind, in your opinion, when do you feel you're gonna have a gut to say, hey, we're gonna have to just resell that property or we're gonna build, we're ready to go?
Yeah, I think that this may seem correct too, the more successful Speedway is, the more likely it is that we build. And I think that, you know, they're capable, they're a big company, they make some mistakes as well. And so, you know, I hope they're successful at that corner because in the long run, it solves our problem at 4410. Long term, that doesn't, you know, compete on the level that we'd like to compete. We feel that we can bring commercial enterprise because we've got pieces that attract even other uses, so. But our business plan, as it was pictured, you know, a couple of years back, was to acquire the Parkland School property to make it viable for that investment. And, you know, to present the city with the possibility of two sites coming forward. Our only complication was that Speedway showed up in the midst of our best effort to come forward at both. And so, I mean, we're just being responsible. You know, it's clear in the language that we're wanting something for the investment that we're clearly communicating to the city that we'll permit immediately and build. And Bull Valley, the other one though, I think at this time, because of Speedway's position, if they tell, my hope is that they're successful enough and that there's other development around there that. But to make it so that we weren't in the conversations, you know, amongst either citizens or the city, we provided a guarantee that we would take that facility down to eliminate that debate of why would something continue as an ISO. But I will tell you, the only reason we kept it in its condition was so that we had the option of reopening on a more of a short-term basis. But the way to do that would be to put the tanks and lines in in a way that we would be able to reuse the canopy is in a position where if we just break the building out from underneath it, we can have a facility, you know. I mean, we could open that thing as it is, pull the building out and put it back in the future. So we could be something that Speedway doesn't want, which is a nemesis with a much less, you know, much smaller cost structure. But I don't want to be threatening a company like that. I think in the long run, they're good at what they do and we compete on that level. But why I'm here tonight is to be having the confidence to compete on a level that we, you know, just literally are not equipped with the same tools.
And if I could follow up, the incentive package is just, it's, that's a tough one to accept. But I think I'm trying to look at other values of this whole proposal and, you know. And, you know, raising of the buildings is, is an element that we don't see too much here in the city, which, and, and there's definitely been some key points brought up tonight, that it's, it's something that we're looking at and trying to accomplish that. But there's definitely a timeframe in that on our part and, and there's, you know, there's definitely, there's definitely some value to eliminating, and I'll put it to a certain extent, especially one location right now, an ISO. And you try to balance that, the value of that, of what we're looking at, potentially, possibly agreed to tonight. And that's, that's what I'm struggling with right now with, you know, I see that, I mean, I do see that value there. I mean, it's there, and I know that's a tough one. And, but, but the numbers are just, I, I don't know what else to say, but the numbers are just tough to swallow. That's all I have.
Any other discussion by council? Thank you, John. You do want to go ahead and have a seat if you'd like. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public regarding public comment on this item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment? Please step up to the podium, lady right here. State your name and address for public right here.
Kathy Adams, 3618 Grand Avenue in McHenry. And my only concern with what I've heard is that if we raise the other two locations and there's nothing put there, from an environmental perspective, what's gonna happen to runoff with nothing there? What are we, what's gonna happen to pooling or, I'm not in, I can't, I haven't done an environmental impact study, so I can't stand here with any authority and tell you if you raise this building and all you have here is a vacant lot and you don't have a timeline of when you're going to be able to put something there, this is what is likely to happen to that space. I'm just concerned, ISO or not, what will happen if you have nothing where right now you have something?
Hi, my name's Carol Monson. I live at 5302 Greenbrier. There's two things. One, on social media, the number one complaint is we have too many vacant buildings. This has given us an option to get rid of some. The other thing is, there is nothing on the southwest end of this town. He's gonna make our gas station bigger. I mean, if we don't stop at that gas station, we're going south. South is Crystal Lake. So he's giving you an option. He's giving us two good wins here. And I understand, you know, you guys know tax dollars more than I do, but we're going south, so you either help us and get rid of some of these buildings. He's giving you some nice options. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else come on up to the podium?
Hi, my name is Luis Derrick Tagular, 4620 West Lake Tree Drive. I'm not in the districts, but every single day I drive, every single day I drive to McHenry West Campus. I work there. Traffic, as you reiterated, is absolutely horrible. I have to probably do some illegal traffic, traffic maneuvers.
Did you hear that?
Just to get, to work on time and to get my little brother also to school on time. He comes with me every morning. So I, I don't, I see the value if you do build a gas station, but I also see safety issues coming up if you do decide to build the gas station there, especially because there's a school right there. I just don't think it's a good mix to have right there in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to also say, I know that it's gotten brought up a few times regarding the school at Parkland. I know there's been issues of traffic getting blocked all the way up to Route 120. So I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM with District 15, just so council everyone knows in the public. At 7:00 AM tomorrow, because I contacted them last week regarding issues of that corner. So we're working with the Transportation Department along with District 15 Superintendent and staff to work on how we can move the flow of traffic through there. There is a lot of options. Right now they're, you know, some issues and they are aware of that, so we are working on that. So my goal is by next week, we won't have a backup on Ringwood Road as much as possible. So I just wanted to state that. Any other public comment at this time? Last chance, public comment? Alderman left?
Yeah, just to get Alderman that with public. Basically, Chief, years back, we used to have a gas station that was vibrant. What were their, what were the traffic issues then that are different than what they have with it being closed?
You know, what I can say is that, that property's been vacant for, I don't know the exact amount of time, but...
Probably about 15 years.
About a decade. And the, the traffic patterns back then are probably not relevant to the traffic patterns we have right now. And I wouldn't be able to give you enough research on that accident data.
The only thing is, is the amount of traffic that goes in and out of that school probably hasn't increased in the last 15 years either though. But anyway, the other question I had is, okay, if, if they're talking about raising these three buildings, you know you're gonna redevelop the one for sure, what are the other two gonna look like when the buildings are raised? And I guess Ross would probably be the one to tell us. What are the requirements? If, if those buildings get raised and you wind up with empty lots, how do they get developed as an empty lot? Because you do have to redevelop it. It isn't where you leave the foundation sitting there or you leave the parking lot sitting there or whatever, right?
That would have to be removed and then soil stabilization, so grass would have to be basically put back and then the lot would have to be maintained by the property owners, so it would just be a grass lot.
So if he raises the building, 120 and Ringwood, he'll have to take all that pavement out completely and re...
Correct.
Re-seated or whatever.
And then it would be a grass field.
And the same with 4410?
Correct.
Okay, just so we know what, what to expect.
We would allow the access points to probably stay, you know, given...
The aprons.
Correct.
Yeah. Any problem with those aprons is the fact that, will it, and that's like the McHenry Savings Bank, you know, on, on 31. I mean, how many people sometimes aren't even thinking and, yeah, they wanna turn right on the next intersection and all of a sudden they wind up in that lane and then realize, oh, wait a minute, there's no, no access there, especially at night if you're not familiar with the area. So, I don't know. Is there some way of requiring those to be curbed or...
No, thanks. I would hate to give them the state.
I just think to some extent it winds up to be a...
I would hate to lose them for future development.
So, all right, thank you.
If, if he does have, if, if he does, if he does have this and he gets the property, he would have to come back before the council to finalize that development, correct? Because he's not, he's not making a commitment to it tonight.
If this...
On Ringwood and 120, it's gotta come back towards that.
Either property has to go with planning and zoning and city council.
All right, okay, thanks. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion before asking a motion? All right, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of a development and economic incentive agreement between the city of McHenry and Graham Enterprises Incorporated relating to the demolition and redevelopment of the McHenry BP gas station located at 5301 Bull Valley Road, demolition of the vacant building at 5520 West Elm Street, and demolition of the vacant building located at 4410 West Elm Street. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion as just presented, Mayor.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Devine? Thank you. Any discussion by council? Alderman Condon?
Just, I just wanna state again that I, I would support this, but only with the, the split on the increase from the sales tax revenue. So as presented, I cannot support it, but if it were amended or if it does not pass and it came back as such, I would support it.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Clerk, please cover him.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
No.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Lab?
No.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
No.
You're not interested in tonight working on the increase in the incentive from the sales tax, correct?
I'm sorry, I should have been keeping better control or what?
Well, you lost, okay? The question is, do you wanna change your petition tonight to take 50% of the increase from where the existing sales tax of the past couple of years, or is that not right for tonight?
I'll propose this. I think if you looked at, if you took everything I said and, and you consider the possibility that if we, what I'm telling you is, I'm trying to be truthful, there's so many moving parts, the cigarette category, the, the price of gasoline in the sales tax calculation are kind of real moving parts that you have no control of in our industry. It's one unusual piece of, you know, what we do business. If you went back three years ago, maybe just a little further than that, I think everybody in the room can remember gasoline over four bucks a gallon. If that's what I'm hoping for, to make this investment, it's kind of intuitive. So if we said, if you would allow me to propose that you put a bogey in there, that it's everything above, say 20,000, and then we start splitting, then I feel like I can walk away from here telling you, we'll do exactly what we said. But I wasn't anticipating that, I just feel like, I don't wanna walk away losing this building season and, and, you know, I struggle to make my points, but I was trying to be super honest with you so that you could visualize what my difficulty is. It's not holding on to what I've got. It's, what I've got is gonna leave, a big portion of that. So if you, if you believe what I told you, that if we sold that site, that site would not do the business it's doing today, then maybe you can meet me halfway and say that it'll bogey at 20,000.
What are you saying, bogey?
Yes. You're a golfer. Sorry? You're a golfer, aren't you?
Yeah.
He just said, he just taking 20,000 off the top, then I'll split it.
I'm saying make the base, bogey base, whatever. 20,000 is the number. And so whatever we would do, if, if in the example that you...
So anything in excess of 20,000 in sales tax, 50/50, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Carol, I mean, Mayor forgets.
Look, we, we're done, we can move on. I'm just trying to get the job done.
Okay, I was just gonna say, why don't you, just everybody go home on this one and let's, let's take and reanalyze it and maybe it'll come back to council, maybe it won't, but at this point, I don't think you wanna just off the top of your head just start coming up with another figure.
I'll tell you, I...
So I think that's where we need to go.
As a walk away from me, I, I will do everything that we said. We'll affirm it, we'll move through the process, but I really do feel like I'm not in a position to agree. So that's how far apart we are. If you approve or consider the 20, we're done tonight. If, if I'm coming back to try to say, well, okay, I'll, I'll make that base what we've done for the past two years, it's a nonstarter, so.
Well, you've heard, you've heard what the council has said and what their concerns are, so...
But I hope you hear what I'm saying, is that I don't have, that base of 57,000 is not a real number. And so if you believe that 20 is, then I just cut the thing in half and we've gotta do, you know, I mean, my hope is that, that it would pay for itself on that current business, but then I'm in, you know, a pretty good spot. But to make that guarantee and spend 3 million bucks to do it and, and another couple hundred thousand and mowing buildings down as opposed to a strategy to keep them open is, you know, a real offer. And so I don't do this normally, but I feel like, you know, McHenry has always been kind of a town that, that is reasonable and has a business-minded approach to everything. So if you don't see the beauty of what I've just offered you, having just told you that cigarettes are moving from 18 to 21 in a lot of communities, that the category itself is going away and that, and that you have a site that, that, you know, somebody else will be building on another corner and asking for the same thing, and then you'll consider maybe new business. This is, this is a family that's been in here for 60 years. I'd love you to just say, get started and go. And, you know, if you're looking for middle ground, I just gave it to you.
Where does the majority of, is the majority of council, I mean, be willing to discuss this, or would you like to end it? Alderman Condon?
I just wanna throw, can I just ask a couple questions? Okay, so if I'm, my math is not my strong suit. So making, you're making about 56,000, or we're, we're getting about 56,000 in revenue now, correct? And they're proposing another, if the addition went forward, another 43, correct? Am I following that? So that's almost 100,000.
From one side.
From just that one side, right, right? And if we split that, so look, if we went along with what you're proposing, that's 50,000, we'd be getting less than what we're getting now, right?
And a $3 million investment in upgrading other sites. You have to include that in mind, man.
I, I, there is certainly value there. I, I agree with that, but, but to, but to go to 20,000, I think is too low. I, I guess, I don't, you know, I, I don't know. 20,000 is too low for me.
Oh, I mean, it's one vote, right?
Yes.
Are you trying to buy one?
And here's it, and I'm it, so. And I'm it right now, so, I mean, but, well, I don't feel that that's unfair to say.
What I'm betting on is that the price of gasoline doesn't go down. Then I lose. If we want to bet that the price of gasoline goes up, we'll buy and it goes down too, so...
Well, every business owner has to, to take some risks and I, I understand that, but to start at 20,000, if we're...
I, I just wanna check our math. So 56,000, 43,000 is 99,000.
Right.
Take 20 off the top is 79,000. Because we're gonna...
Oh, that's right.
First 20. And then divide the 79 by two, it's 39.5, plus 20,000 is 59, 59.5, so it's 3, 3,500 more than we're getting now off the site.
Wait, say that again, you just lost...
So it's 99,000, it would be the total, all right? Take 20 off the top, because that's, that's, that's what it said. Right, 79,000 divided by two is 39.5, plus the 20, the original 20,000. So the 39.5 is half, half the 79, right?
Right.
That's what the deal is.
Right.
And add 20,000 to that, because we're still getting the 20,000, 20,000 original amount, all right?
So it brings us back up to roughly what we're getting now.
A little bit ahead.
And then in addition, Derek, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that that's if we meet the status quo. Anything more than that, you're, you're still, you're proceeding forward.
We get 50%, right.
It's 50% of the amount. So I can tell you, I wouldn't make the investment if I thought...
Right.
So I would just say that I would not make the investment if I thought we were gonna do just the same. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the investment if I thought all I can do is, is share on the incremental. So 20, you know, again, I don't, I don't wanna make this feeling, let's make a deal. I'm only this bold because we've been here for 60 years and we've been that honest with each other, but if that doesn't feel... But if, um, that doesn't feel like, wow, this guy is, you know, needless. In between, and I, and nothing I've said is anything that you should disregard. I really believe that's what our fear factor is, and, and the things that I can't, you know, put in, in, you know, terms of anything but intangibles, is that we'll continue to maintain the sites the way we do, and, and, and continue to look for viable options. If, if Speedway is not successful, that's a shame, but it just made me happy that I didn't make the bet. That doesn't eliminate the possibility that Walgreens or some other giant sales tax producer becomes our most viable alternative. And so, we're not going to sit there and mow grass for long. I mean, we're hoping that we can do what we do best. But, but that 31 and, and Charles Miller, we're going to continue to invest in that site. What I told you, we'll take down the office building, it's not to, to grow grass there either. We'll be back to you, trying to figure out how to show you that, that if we invest in the car wash, which you get nothing for in terms of sales tax, but, but we become a more viable player who's on that site, we're retaining business that's possibly going to the Thornton in Lake North. So, I, I really do want to walk away with a building permit tonight, or at least the, move forward towards one.
All right, yeah, let's, let's see if we can do that. Yeah, can you make a motion, please?
Yes. I would make the motion to approve the attached ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of development economic incentive agreement between the city of McHenry and Grim Enterprise, Inc., with the incentive to have a base of $20,000 in the split of that, that...
Does it?
Correct?
Yes.
Can I have a second? Alderman Devine? Any discussion? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, we just changed our, our motion now to just kind of, just make it sound cheap and petty. And it isn't going to change my mind, that, that little bit of money. And as far as I'm concerned, any bit of this incentive, it's not bringing any new products to the city of McHenry, it's not giving our residents, uh, any additional services, like as much as we need the gas station out by Ringwood and 120. And we're going to be paying a million dollars for that, and to me, I think it is totally ridiculous. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right, Craig?
Would you open up for public comment?
Yeah, if you don't like the motion? Yep.
Craig Wilcox from 5908 Whiting Drive. It's always interesting to see negotiation occur in public, and it means that one side or the other is probably going to overlook something. So, I'll confuse it a little bit more. Your goal is to incentivize economic development. So, why not look at a 75-25 split at the Bull Valley Crystal Lake Road and encourage more of the incentive to come from the Ringwood Road aspect? But I don't expect you to try and negotiate that here on the floor in front of the public. I would actually encourage you to walk away from this modified amendment tonight, and actually go back and negotiate in good faith, where both sides can really look at the implication of making a change. I think 20,000 probably came in and it's off the cuff, but he knows his business. But I think you guys need to take a look at it. So, I would encourage you to vote against this amendment and relook at it with good faith going forward with a slight change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I opened up for public comment, is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment regarding this? Okay. Alderman Condon?
Um, just, I, I guess I take a little bit offensive saying that we cheapened it, because I was, my point was that I wanted to at least keep making sure that we were getting at least fair to what we were currently getting. And again, um, no disrespect to Mr. Wilcox, but, um, we have all the material, all the information has changed, there was just one element. So, there is nothing to review, other than the one change that we can easily do. We have all the background information. That said, and Alderman Schaefer brought this point up, we're, we are investing not only, or we are making this agreement, not just solely on, um, sales tax revenue, but on an investment in our community, and upgrades, I'm taking your word on that, upgrades at two locations, and, um, and another site that may be grassed for a little while, but has potential in the future. So, that's an investment in the community that I'm willing to make.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yo.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Thank you. Forward to work with you. Thank you.
We're here another 60 years, guys.
Yep. Luck.
Thank you for being on, so...
Thank you.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to reconsider the denial by the city council on April 2nd, 2018, of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use, outdoor seating and indoor entertainment for Utopian Roast LLC, DVA Hidden Pearl Cafe, located at 1252 through 1254 North Green Street. An ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a revocable license agreement with Utopian Roast LLC to utilize .45 acres, city-owned property located at 1246 North Green Street, AKA Newman Park, for outdoor seating and entertainment. Uh, this motion has to be made by an Alderman or Alderwoman who voted no on April 2nd, 2018.
Before you make that motion, I want to explain a little bit about the procedure. It was questioned whether this should be a motion to rescind the, the last action, as opposed to reconsider it. It's a, you know, it's a fair question, and I, I looked it up a little bit. But rescissions, a little bit, I made a comment at the last meeting after the speaker walked out. And there is zoning involved, there's a base zoning that came to us for the assembly use. And that is a process that's ongoing. If we rescind it, that essentially annuls that proceeding, it cancels, it terminates it. It's as though it didn't happen. So, I think reconsideration is actually the way to go here, and that is the motion that the mayor wants to...
Thank you. Yeah, we can open up the floor for discussion if you like. Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, what's the rules of Robert's rules say on that, as far as rescinding, or...
Just did that, reconsideration.
Doesn't matter.
Close, but rescission is not something I would suggest because of what I said. It's, if you annul, if you annul the proceeding, the question is what happened to the zoning? And that's, that's something you should get there.
Well, I don't think...
Oh, well, it's debatable, okay?
Okay, I know, I'm just saying, why would you rescind something that you did? I mean, if you did it, it's there.
It was a question that was asked between the meetings, and I looked it up, that's all.
Just, just get the whiteout, and whiteout the fact that we never talked about it at the previous meeting.
I answered it.
I, I could see reconsidering it, if that's what people want to do. But to rescind what we stated and what we did the last time, I think, should stay on the books. My opinion.
Well, at least we agree on that.
Any other discussion on this item?
Yeah?
Alderman Santi?
No. Briefly, I was able to, in our discussion from the last meeting, I was able to set up an appointment at a time to meet with Mr. Kearns at the facility. Looked over the situation and asked him a few questions, got some thoughts, some ideas of what he's looking at. And, you know, he, he opened up my mind to, to, you know, to look into it and, and get a good idea of what, uh, what his, what his plans are. I, I guess, a couple of things I want to make sure I understand is the, um, the park area that would be on the south side of this building would have the same agreement lease or what have you, in regards to what we've done with, with DC Cops down the street, is that correct? Is that, that all worth, that agreement? There'll be no alcohol in the park, and is this... Right, so it's not the same. Okay, other than that, is it the same? Is it where it's, he's leasing the land from us, or is that correct?
Well, it's a license agreement.
A license agreement?
Right, and, and he does have a 12-month clause in there that we cannot revoke the license unless he's in breach of the license. So, that's a provision, that's not in the DC Cops agreement, and then the alcohol, that's the only difference. Otherwise, the base of the agreement is the same.
Okay. And then, also, on the front half, that is, that is an area that, I, he has some, some photos that he showed us on his latest proposal, that, um, still have a gated area that will, uh, be allowed, be allowed to have, I think, what's called, I don't know, mobile or portable tables and chairs where they can be removed. But that'll be an area that has to be gated, because you will be allowed alcoholic beverages in that section, is that correct?
On the front of the...
On the front of the building, on the Green Street side?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I'm, I'm open to listening to more discussion, I have no further questions right now.
And Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, the first question I've got is, why didn't we get a copy of the agreement with Ned Newman on Newman Park? That's how we acquired it, and what restrictions are on that park? I know there were some that were the use of this or something. Does anybody ever look at that agreement?
The most recent discussions we've had with Mr. Newman have been regarding taking those buildings down. Other than that, I do not believe that there are restrictions placed upon that park for any specific...
Thank you, but my question was, please, answer the question I asked. And the question I...
Now, wait a minute, Glenn.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
I just asked...
Question I had was, did you look at the review?
Don't disrespect...
Don't disrespect, I'm just asking for a question.
This is like the fifth meeting, all right, I'm not going to have it.
That's fine, but I have a, a question, all I ask is that I get the fact of the answer that I asked. I don't want fluff, I just want the answer I asked, that's all I'm asking. He's telling me everything except the question I'm asking. Did anybody look at the, okay, that's all I'm asking. So, all I'm saying is, is if this goes forward, can we make sure that there's some caveat? That it, it's, it's related to, that there is no restrictions on the contract? That's all I'm asking. You know what I'm saying? Because what if we approve this, and then all of a sudden, there is something in that agreement? We should be clear that, you know, that's all I'm asking.
You mean like covenants in the deed or something like that?
I, I, when, when...
When the transfer...
We acquired Newman Park when the city hall was sold to Ned Newman, and there was some agreement. I don't have it, I don't know what the exact... All I'm asking is, is that we have the facts, or that if the facts show different, that it could be rescinded. That's all I'm, I'm saying, just so that we don't wind up in a bind. That's all I'm saying. In other words, it would be approved, if it gets approved, it's approved according to the fact that it, it meets the intent of the agreement with, with the Newman property. That's all, that's all I'm asking. And the other question I have is, looking at the rendition in the picture of the, uh, the railing out on Green Street blocking off that sidewalk, um, is that just a fast penciled-in drawing, or is that the way that's supposed to be developed? Because I look at the, if you look at the fence area, and then you look at the entranceway, it's a tripping hazard. And of course, if you're looking at, what is it, 1.6 inches or whatever of city property, that's going to be right on city property where that tripping hazard is. So, if somebody's going into the facility and they go along the railing and they make a right, you're going to trip right up right there? It's not, it's not left. So, I guess my question is, where are we with that? I mean, is it going to get developed this way, the way the picture shows? Or is that going to be addressed, or, or what?
Alex, can you go ahead and answer, answer that?
Uh, right, well, there's no requirement for the railing to go all the way across where that elevated step is. However, it's something that we could add wherever there's an elevated area that has to have a railing, if we're concerned about tripping. So, I don't know if...
Dan Kearns? How you doing, Dan?
He's tired.
Need some coffee.
Need some coffee.
Name an address for a public break, please.
Dan Kearns, 2006 Birch, Kennedy Avenue.
Thank you.
So, so how far did you want to extend it, you know, because this shows it stopping shy of where it becomes level with the remaining sidewalk?
So, um... Yeah, because I'm not a concrete guy, I, I think that the fence, that would actually wind up being stairs, and, or the fence would continue, I would let the, uh, the concrete company determine where those steps should be. Again, we just want it to match the theater, so whatever they had to do to, to accommodate the same problem, we would just match it. I mean...
The front of this building is kind of unique, because it, you're going to be at grade level on the north side of the building, and then you're going to end up with two or three steps on the south side of the building, as that sidewalk comes across the face of that building level. So, you're going to, you know, the concrete guy can make an actual stairway in front of that, um, of the doors, so that you could walk up the steps, but you would still have the ramp coming from the north.
Which way does the ramp come from?
It would start at the northern property line.
The northern property line?
And move south.
Property line, and come that way, so through the smoking area, is what you're saying?
Right, right, as Mr. Kearns calls that, on the north side of the building, there's a smoking area.
Well, no, yeah, no, it wouldn't be through the smoking area, the smoking area would be to the, if you were going into it, you'd turn north to go to the smoking area, south would be the ramp.
All right, so if you look at the, the second picture, the ramp starts about halfway down the face of the building?
Looks like it's just shy of the, the most northern door opening, correct?
Right, so that, so that trip area there would actually, you know, by code, you can't have a slanted step like that, so we could make the steps equal across the face of it. And then you'd have the ramp on the backside of it, basically.
Or just continue the railing to...
Or continue the railing.
And I think that would be... Or that's what the theater does. Yeah, that's what I did with my, mine of my building, so I, I think extending it, just extending it to where it starts.
Right. I think that visual is more to address the look of a prison, and I don't think it really looks like that.
To give one example.
Any other questions?
Um, just, just as a comment, just on Riverside Drive, there are, there's no railings and there's steps. I just wanted to point that out.
Exactly, across the street from here, too. There's two steps with no railing. It's always been an issue, but when you read...
Right, oh, you're right, on the street, here, right, right. So, although I do think there's, that you need a railing because of the unlevel, um, grade, but...
Any other discussion, we got any sign up before I ask for a motion?
Yeah. What question for me, Kearns? If in fact, um, you received these, an okay approval on these, um, items in front of us tonight, in your opinion, how quickly and how consistently will you be in there working on this project?
So, the, the short answer, of course, is as soon as possible, but after the last vote, I had to drop the contractor schedule, I mean, because we didn't know what's happening, so... So that's with the assumption that I can get back on everybody's schedule. Because they can't sit around waiting for my job either, they got other jobs to do. So let's hope, it's the best, let's assume we get on at least within the week. And so it would make us start next Monday, ideally. And then, of course, I follow that nine-week timeline, weather permitting on the outdoor stuff.
Thank you, I do appreciate that because you did put a timeline in there and something that we personally, I keep an eye on. But I appreciate you putting it in there. So I have no further comments at this time.
Alderman Shaver?
Like to make the motion?
Actually, I'm gonna open up for public comment real quick. Yeah, don't mind. Dan, if you can have a seat real quick. I'm gonna open up for public input at this time. Sir, if you wanna come up to the podium.
Hi, I wasn't expecting to speak at the previous item, but formally wanted to introduce myself this moment. So, good evening, my name is Luis Eric Aguilar. I live at 4620 West Lake Shore Drive. I'm a bilingual assistant at District 156, West Campus, and I lived in McHenry for almost 25 years. First generation son of immigrants Sarah Finn and Maria Aguilar. I am here today to express to the council how a small and a local coffee shop is a necessary meeting grounds for the city of McHenry. When the Hidden Pearl was operating in what is now the downtown theater in DC COPS, and I wanna congratulate the mayor and the council for such accomplishments. The Pearl was my personal hub for just getting away from simple problems when life was simpler. But then that hub grew. I realized that a diverse group of people were showing up to the shop, but that isn't really my point now. We had a reason to be at the Hidden Pearl with the rest of the community, whether that be to study or to just meet up with a long-lost friend for interviews, for signing a mortgage, for business meetings, or just simply having a date. Hidden Pearl was also very essential in hosting Chamber of Commerce meetings, Christian workshops, poetry nights, punk shows, Bible studies, debate viewings, and hosting political events from both sides and even in the middle. But what was most important, and I would really want to reiterate that this is the most important aspect of it, was that Hidden Pearl had in all ages events, most of the time. And where else do you see this happen in McHenry? The population is generally growing in the area and that means more teenagers are popping up. In the government class that I assist my English learner student in, they have taken a survey and a majority of the class thinks that there is an insufficient amount of outlets for teens in McHenry. I didn't ask the same students, but when I tell them that I'm doing this for Hidden Pearl, they get so excited and exclaim, "Please help them open, it was my favorite place to study." So I asked the council to prioritize in Hidden Pearl's efforts for a sooner opening day so that McHenry has one of its many homes ready by the summer, so that everybody on Green Street has a great summer together. Thank you.
Anyone else coming up?
This is the real reason I'm... The other two, I just couldn't keep my mouth shut. I'm really sorry about that, but my name is Kathy Adams. I live at 3618 Grand Avenue, if you don't already have that memorized. Back to here in McHenry and Hidden Pearl is a hidden gem. No pun intended. And as a teacher with a friend who has a child at risk, this is a place where you can go and hide with a teenager who needs to talk and nobody cares. Nobody's even looking, nobody's listening. They don't care that you're there, huddled over a cup of coffee or tea or chai or chocolate or whatever it is and eating one of the best muffins that there are in this, well, in one of the places in town. My concern is, because they have been taken off of their construction schedule and there is a timeframe in here, if they can't get back on, please give them the latitude they need to get this business open. Do everything that you can to help them get back on their feet. We have to get this previously important component of our community back open and running because this community truly cannot survive without the Hidden Pearl providing great coffee, great food, great tea, and a place for people who really need community events and a place to go. Ask the Chamber of Commerce if you don't believe me.
Any other public comment? Sir?
Forgive me, I've been up since like two in the morning. My name is Dominic Donato. I'm from 1717 North Brown Street, McHenry, Illinois. I started coming to the Pearl, well, because I do the poorest job in the world. I act in my spare time. And Dan was putting on a show in a coffee shop. And I was excited about it because the problem is, I find as an actor, is everybody wants to put me in a box, whether that's onstage, a million miles away from you in the audience, or on a TV screen. Dan allowed me to bring a character into a space and I can move backwards and forwards all over the place. And the thing that inspired me was the fact that I was allowed to experiment in a way I'm not traditionally allowed to do in a theater or most performing circumstances. You tend to be kinda scripted. And I think losing that experiment in our community, in our art form, has been kind of a problem in today's society. I think the Hidden Pearl addresses that problem by giving young people, old people, any ages, a creative outlet, whether it's through the poetry nights or, you know, some shows that go great and some shows I wish I would've done better on. But that's, that's it.
Say it thirty times, but get your name.
Sudan Katomsky, 2619 West Lincoln. I'm a Realtor with Ad Properties out of Barrington. I have a home office also at my house. I don't go to bars, I don't go to chain coffee shops, but I would go to Dan's shop to meet clients, to meet people that I had had meetings with. And ever since he closed, I've been having outdoor meetings. So the people that I would frequently go there, is it open yet, is it open yet? No, no, no. So when I saw that he was up again for this reconsideration or whatever we're calling it currently, I had to come and, you know, support him. It is different, it is something someone will come to our town for. It has a different feel to be able to get a cup of coffee in a restaurant. Yes, you could, but I don't think the waitress would be very happy with you because you're destroying a cup of coffee. But now he's saying that he would offer some upscale wines. I am a wine drinker. That is something I think I would enjoy maybe with a client at say two or three in the afternoon. But again, I don't go to bars, so I don't wanna go to a bar to meet my clients. I don't want that atmosphere. I want an atmosphere that is good, clean, fun, and that is something that Dan offers.
Anyone else that'd like to make a public comment? Ma'am? Or both of you?
We go together.
Alright. State both your names, if you don't mind.
My name is Dan Peggarm.
I am Jaclyn Fowler, 2310 Orchard Beach Road, McHenry, Illinois.
So we got engaged about a year ago and the first place we went to was the Hidden Pearl. It was right before they closed down and it was a really sweet moment for us, but it was also very bittersweet to have this place that for us is home. The first moment that we shared with a group of people that we decided that we were gonna share our lives was in this place with everybody we know and everybody that we love. And every single person that's come here has had that experience for themselves in one way or another. And whether it be the poetry nights or the shows that we do, there's this huge sense of community, whether you're talking to the person that's sitting in that shop reading a book by themselves or not. And that community is just so strong and so beautiful and so wonderful. And Dan Kearns is somebody who cares so deeply about this community that he's not looking just for himself, he's looking at Green Street and he's looking at McHenry and trying to do what he can for everybody here. And, you know, I just really appreciate that and want to continue sharing that with everyone.
And to further build the importance of this, you guys are looking at, well, we wanna bring something new to McHenry. This is what McHenry had, this is what McHenry made on its own. I went to high school and I went to West Campus graduate. And, you know, I was always looking for an outlet and I joined theater because of that. But outside of theater and high school, there really wasn't much of a scene for that. Sure, there's everything every now and then, but this area, this community really creates that environment for not just students, but for adults to mix together and collaborate and work together. This sort of cultural phenomenon isn't something that you see if you go to the Opera House in Woodstock. That's a very specific group that come together and do certain works. If you look at the Ralph Center, it's a very specific group that come together and do work. But what we have here is everyone comes together and everyone finds pride, everyone finds their own culture and their own self at this place. And whatever you can do to get that on the board, I'm fair game.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, everybody, thank you, good evening. My name is Marshall Cohen at 4413 Honka Street. You know, I've worked a lot of dignitaries, everyone from Nelson Mandela to, we're looking at Ms. Maggie Daley, Mayor Daley, the list goes on and on. Worked in public affairs as well as public relations. The reason why I'm saying this is because it got really old very fast, you know? And my cousins were like, "Get out of the business, it's bad for your health." Come out to Crystal Lake, you know? That's when I met Dan, okay? Fluke, total fluke. And Dan and I hit it off and he told me about the Hidden Pearl Cafe. And I had, Hidden Pearl Coffee, I had never heard of it because I'd never been to McHenry before. I've only been here a month. And I learned from the past five months that I've been working with Dan that he genuinely cares and is community-driven and is not just about, you know, there's no competition with other establishments of any sort. It comes from the heart and I have never had a boss like that in my life. And I'm very grateful to be working for him. I'm excited for the new Hidden Pearl. Thank you.
Quickly now. You have ten seconds. Take your time.
Sudan Katomsky, 2619 West Lincoln. Lived here for about, almost twenty years. First of all, I think we should pass this because we've all been sitting here for the last three hours. So just on that. I wanna thank you guys for St. Patty's Day. We had a great time, it was very exciting to see all those people walking through downtown. They miss the Hidden Pearl unfortunately and I think it would've been an asset to have them there. They have a big following, a lot of heartfelt people, as you can see here, so I wish it would reconsider. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments by the public? I see none. Before I ask for a motion, I just wanna say, you know, I've met with Dan, I think dozens of times regarding this project. And, you know, as far as it not passing, you know, the last meeting has to do with just more of just not the clarity of what was happening on the property. And, you know, we want businesses, you know, I'm not speaking on behalf of every council member, but, you know, we want to get new businesses or bring businesses back. You know, we wanna support every business. So I appreciate, you know, you coming back and obviously bringing an army with you, so that's good. So I just wanted to state that, you know, it was not just that we weren't being business-friendly. So I just wanted to state that and I, I know social media gets out of hand a little bit and of course, it's the mayor's fault. Yeah, so I just wanted to make that statement on behalf of the council and myself. So at this time, I asked for a motion to reconsider the denial by the city council on April 2nd, 2018, of an ordinance granting the conditional use permit to allow the assembly use, outdoor seating, and indoor entertainment for Utopian Roast LLC, DVA Hidden Pearl Cafe, located at 1252 through 1254 North Green Street, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a revocable license agreement with Utopian Roast LLC to utilize .45 acres of city-owned property located at 1246 North Green Street, aka Newman Park, for outdoor seating and entertainment. Motion must be made by an alderman who voted no on April 2nd.
Just so we're clear on this, I wanna make sure you understand, you can have it either way you want. It's either a motion to reconsider it and we'll vote on that just like you would on a motion to table, maybe? So this is a motion to reconsider and then if that passes, then we'll vote on the action itself? You wanna do it that way? Okay, so this is simply a motion to bring it back on the table, let's call it, to reconsider it. And then if it passes, then we'll vote on the actual adoption of the ordinance as proposed.
Alderman Shaver?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call it off.
Alderman Shaver?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Behebik?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Conwell?
Yes.
Alderman McGlynn, pardon.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
What? Eleven o'clock? It's almost eleven o'clock, alright? I might make a couple mistakes. Alright, the next item on the agenda is discussion to adopt an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use, outdoor seating, and indoor entertainment for a Utopian Roast LLC, DVA Hidden Pearl Cafe, located at 1252 through 1254 North Green Street, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a revocable license agreement with Utopian Roast LLC to utilize .45 acres of city-owned property located at 1246 North Green Street, aka Newman Park, for outdoor seating and entertainment. Discussion by council. Alderman Conlin?
Well, I made the motion at the last meeting and, I don't know if I made the motion. Yeah, I must've, I did. Sorry, I'm tired, too. I just wanted to restate again some of the reasons why I feel like it is very important. And I do appreciate, as the mayor stated, I think that some of the items needed to be clarified. I thought they could've been worked out between Mr. Kearns and staff, but it's nice to see things in black and white or color and have them very spelled out so that we can make sure that everything's held accountable and follow to the agreement. As many of the audiences stated, besides the theatrical events that I think that will be present, the meeting places, it was said, I am a member of the chamber and often had meetings with other chamber members there. I also met friends just for a coffee because it was a nice, comfortable, quaint spot. I also, one item that wasn't mentioned, but I attended an event that was between moms and their children on a very important topic to me, suicide prevention. And I also had stated that I saw my son, when he was in high school and went to West Campus, so across town, would get up... so across town, would get up on late start Tuesdays, when he could have slept in, and met fellow students just because it was a great place to hang out before school, where he could have slept in on those days. And I often would see kids there before and after school. And as mental health counselor, and I think this was alluded to by the audience, but having a safe place for kids to hang out and they can see other, they see adults who are working and just sitting at leisure, where they can see that, have to see robots, people working at business. I think that's, it's, Dan has created an atmosphere and an environment that transcends ages and is just a great place to meet up. So I was incredibly disappointed, not as much as Dan, I'm sure, but when this failed because I want us to be able to offer different types of businesses, and this is so unique. I was very disappointed, but so glad that he was able to work with staff and come for us tonight.
Thanks. Any other discussion by council? Questions for Dan Kearns? Alderman Kerr?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Kearns. At one point during the last meeting, you said this, and I'll quote you exactly. "At the end of the day, this discussion isn't changing anybody's mind. I mean, we all came here with a yes or a no. We may as well just vote and get it over with," that's my opinion, close quote. Is that still your opinion?
That was definitely my opinion in that moment, there's no doubt about that. You know, I will say this, if, you know, I didn't solicit all these people to come here. Some of them came on their own and to make lemonade out of this situation. For me to hear some of these things that were said actually made this quite worth it. So for whatever that's worth. But no, I think, obviously I met with Vic and he was a no vote, and him and I finally got to have some dialogue together. So I felt, if nothing else, he at least answered the questions for himself and he could better answer the questions for you guys than I probably could because, you know, I'm coming from a different place. I've said to the mayor many times, "I'm a square peg and I know that, I'm a different person." But that doesn't make me a bad person, that just makes me different. So, no, I don't feel that way, to short you to the question.
All right, thank you. Because I, you know, and I felt I just needed to cover this because frankly, that was insulting to think that, you know, and it was evidenced by the murmurs you could hear in the room when you said it by the majority of the people that were here. For myself, I did not come to that meeting with a decision fully formed.
I formally apologize.
Many times I do have an opinion coming in, but not very often do I have a final decision in my mind until I listen to my colleagues, the petitioner, the staff, whether or not we completely agree. And I frequently find that my colleagues and others ask questions I never even thought of. So I always try to consider everything that's put out there. And I frequently learn, obviously, something from the petitioner themselves because they know their business better than all of us do. So I try to do my due diligence, I try to listen, and then I try to make a final decision. On this project, my final decision to vote no only came about after hearing the concerns that were expressed, watching the exchange between yourself, staff and council, and realizing there wasn't even an agreement at that point in time that we had a proper depiction of what was going to happen. The park wasn't, the patio in the park wasn't even the proper drawing in your own words. And, you know, the front wasn't really depicted very well. So I voted no, when it's been said already, because of that lack of clarity, not because of any issues that I had considered prior to the discussion. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, just for future edification. Let's try not to assume that we come, because quite frankly, I possibly would have voted for it until I heard some of the lack of clarity issues.
I appreciate you saying that, and I do apologize for that.
And really, I didn't vote no even because of the comment. I tried to set that stuff aside. The reason I voted no was because there just seemed to be a lack of clarity in what we were talking about. Thank you. The only other comment I had on the proposal itself is something I mentioned the last time and I think we talked about was that when we have large events, like the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the Festivus Days, whatever, and it could be more in the future. But I would like to see, and I think you kind of agreed to that last time, that the fenced area we're talking about, not the railing along the sidewalk, you know, splitting the sidewalk, but the two ends that are going to be closed off, that those are removable so that if, upon the request of the city on an event like that, that that can be removed and the tables and chairs out of the way so that when we have a large crowd of people, we don't have the restriction. So that would be my only real concern at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Shaffer?
Alderman Curry put it very eloquently, a lot better than I could. Exactly the same feelings I had. Everybody that spoke tonight and has spoke to me in the past, I had personally no issues with the business or the mission or what happens there whatsoever. And something, I'm not a big social media guy, but some things got back to me about what was going on and what the council did via social media. And it had nothing to do with your business whatsoever. It had all to do with the plans that were in front of us. So just wanted to reiterate that, too.
Alderman?
Yeah, I have no problem with the business either. The issue becomes the sidewalk. And I can't support using city sidewalk or any portion of that and blocking it off. I know other aldermen say, you know, if we have the bigger doings, they have the, take the gates off. And to be honest with you, I'd rather not have the gates opened if we're going to have steps over there because then now you could wind up with even a bigger tripping hazard. You know what I'm saying, the south end? You've got, you've got, what, two steps there and...
I guess what I'm having...
I think it's better off left gated, unfortunately.
I guess what I'm having a hard time understanding about that is that the width of the sidewalk by the theater and then it's gated off would be exactly the same. And there's arguably more foot traffic on that end. So I don't understand why we can't give them...
It's not joning out, though, is it? It's pretty much even with the rest of the...
It would be, we have the exact same space. Our space would be a little smaller to the building because they have a little more space there. But the actual sidewalk itself would be the exact same.
I'm talking about the building line or whatever, straight across. That fence pretty much is even with the rest of the buildings, correct? It's because of the fact that the movie theater is angled back further that they have the thing there.
I should have measured it, it comes out.
Where you're located there, and again, my concern too, is we're talking about an establishment that bought the property that you had hoped to eventually gain, the empty lot there. He was coming forward and talking about outdoor seating, and I don't want to see fences all along Green Street. And I just, I have a problem with it, I'm sorry, that's just my feeling. I feel that you've got the outdoor patio. I'd rather see a beer garden out in Newman Park with alcohol served, rather than alcohol served and blocking up the sidewalk up in the front. My personal opinion, and that's...
It'd just be harder to...
I will go with what I, my gut feeling is on that. And I'm not going to bend just because of the fact that it's the popular vote to vote the other way. I've just never done that. I've got concerns about it. It's, and again, the pictures that you gave, I asked a question because I do have some questions about it, again, because of the tripping hazard and all that. We've got to look at what's best for the public. I just have to vote my conscience of where I feel the issues are. And good luck on your venture of the business because I'm sure it'll probably be a success with the business. You made a business, success out of the coffee shop. This is going to be a little different type of venture because besides a coffee shop, you'll have bands out there and everything else in a much larger place. So anyway, good luck with your business over there.
Any other discussion by council? At this time, I'd like to open up the public comment for this item. This time, I'm looking for a motion to adopt an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use, outdoor seating and indoor entertainment for Utopian Roast LLC, DBA Hidden Pearl Cafe located at twelve fifty-two through twelve fifty-four North Green Street, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a revocable license agreement with Utopian Roast LLC to utilize point four-five acres of the city-owned property located at twelve forty-six North Green Street, AKA Newman Park, for outdoor seating and entertainment. Alderman Kerr?
I will make that motion with the addition that upon city request, prior to special events, that the gates be opened or the ends be removed and the chairs and tables taken away, a store. And that's only known if the city decides that that's necessary. It may not, that may not ever come up, but I just want, I just wanted to have that possible.
Anyone else would like to second that? Alderman Shaffer?
Second.
Discussion on this item?
We'll actually, if this is adopted, we'll put that into the agreement, just so we keep track of it, okay?
Good, I mean. Any discussion? Clerk, please call it over.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Behebik?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Congratulations. All of you that are clapping, he's expecting a hammer in your hands tomorrow. Stuck building, so. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and no more welcome to exit if you like.
Every Monday here is May, and nothing better than there spring getting there.
Are you guys going to be discussing the fees for the boat?
Yeah, yes, that's the next item.
If I don't come home with that information.
Oh, you'll be in trouble, huh? All right, well, let's move on to that item then. If you wouldn't mind, if you could just exit the chambers? All right. At this time, I'd like to open up for discussion to adopt an ordinance amending various sections of the National Vehicle Code, Chapter sixteen and Chapter thirteen of the Traffic and Motor Vehicle Code relating to hours and fees for the riverfront park boat launch. Council, is there any discussion on this item at this time? Alderman Devine?
I have a couple of comments. I'm okay with the season pass, but I think the daily launch is too high. We want people to use it, and I'm afraid you can go to Chain of Lakes and launch for free. There's many other places closer to the lakes that are same price, maybe a little cheaper. And I feel it should be lower. And I'd hate to see it not being used just for people that don't want to pay the daily price where we can always, if it's popular, we can always go back in a year or two and look to raise it or whatever. But I think twenty-five dollars for residents is too high. And as far as the time, I think ten o'clock's too early. I'd say eleven o'clock. Thursday night boat races up on Grass Lake, you're hard pressed to get back by ten o'clock.
Just on the boat fees, if you don't mind, I'll respond to that. One of the things that we had, I guess with a number of launches, but one in particular was an in-town lender that had some input on that, that that was his going rate and he was worried about us undercutting him and sort of tried to be fair to local businesses that had that launch. That's where that twenty-five dollar came from. Aside from all the people that are along the chain, obviously, the Chain of Lakes State Park is its own, you know...
You pay to enter there, don't you, don't you?
At State Park?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
And the hours just was one thing we looked at, was particularly about the neighbors. We just, that was where we landed there.
Any other discussion by council? Alderman Condon?
I agree with Alderman Devine about the hours, I think eleven o'clock. And while I think we always have to be careful about impact on neighbors, but the reality is we don't want people to be fined either. And so eleven, I think, probably is appropriate for that. I wondered about the fee as well, thinking that, especially for the resident fee, for the residents, but even, I guess, non-residents. But, and I guess the difference between local fees versus the city, this is our, this is a city and this is a service that we're providing to the community too. So while a fee is necessary, does it have to be equal to, I don't know, I don't know. Whatever everybody else has to say.
From a fee point, that was just my biggest factor, was really trying to work with local business and not trying to impact them or, you know. That's never our goal, is to come into competition with them, pretty of law for that amenity to our community.
Scott, Alderman?
Yeah, I just want to state that sometimes it's easier to go down later than to go up. So maybe we start at this amount, what staff's asking for. And we can always go down later on and review it if there's really, what we see a lot of resistance. But to take it low and then decide to go up later, you're going to have a lot more resistance, so. And then again, it's always reviewable down the road, so I kind of agree with what you proposed.
Alderman Santi?
Yeah, I'd like to, I agree with that, but let's, I like the, I mean, I like eleven o'clock too. Which is about travel times regardless, to go see certain nights, even like, you know, other nights. But Thursday night is a good night, so we get to the point where we can put that in the motion. So if regular, if the rest of council's comfortable, just come with that.
Alderman Shaffer?
I'm fine with the fees and changing the time, too. The one thing that we've got to look at, too, and I again, got some feedback because I'm not a full-time old launcher, I do spend a lot of time on the river, but the, this launch is probably one of the best on the river. So people are going to look at that and they're not going to get damaged trailers, damaged cars, damaged boats because of that, too. So I think it's a gem of a launch, and I don't see that fee being a problem whatsoever.
That ample parking will play a role as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Free ample parking.
Free. Alderman Galloway?
I support the eleven o'clock. However, I think we should just kind of keep abreast of the fact that the issue of the neighbors could be a problem down the road. And if we start getting that, we don't ignore them and that we bring it back to council possibly to change it if it really becomes a problem. And you never, I mean, you know, you would hope that everybody at that time would be a little bit more, I wouldn't put it, just towards the neighborhood. Just have to wait and see what happens. But I'd like the eleven o'clock. I can understand some of the reasoning for, you know, when Bear Tech goes out on his bass tournaments, he may be out there till eleven o'clock at night.
Still trying to catch one.
Looking for Charlie the Tutra, you know?
Any other discussion by council? No? Any public comment on this item? Sure, you're not going to get in trouble tonight asking something? All right. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to adopt ordinances amending... amending various sec... Yeah, various sections of the municipal code, Chapter sixteen and Chapter thirteen of the Traffic and Motor Vehicle Code relating to hours and fees for the Miller Riverfront Boat Launch. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion with the adjustment of eleven o'clock in the evening.
PM.
PM.
Okay. Alderman Curry?
I'll second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Behevick?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Staff reports? Sure?
No.
John? Anyone? Chief, anyone? All right.
Arbor Day talk.
Mayor?
John, he's waking up here. John?
He's waking up, I, anything?
Yeah, we have an Arbor Day celebration on Friday, April twenty-seventh, at three PM here at the City Council papers.
Thank you. You have a staff report?